Something like that. Yeah, it's half full. Have you heard from Dr. Doyle, that she moved somewhere, or what's, uh... Since... I was thinking by the, on the way over here today, I guess, because it's a, probably more of a meditation matter, you know? I would have to say that too.
We'll call this meeting of the Craven County Board of Commissioners regular session for Monday, August the 2nd, 2021 to order. Mr. Clerk, if you will, please call the robe.
Commissioner McCabe.
Here.
Commissioner Mitchell.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Liner.
Here.
Commissioner Mark.
Here.
Vice Chairman Booker.
Here.
Chairman Jones.
Here.
Thank you. If you will, at this time, please stand with me as we salute and pledge to the American flag, which will be followed by a prayer from our county attorney.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Almighty and eternal God, you have blessed us with creation and made us fellow workers in bringing about your kingdom. So draw our hearts to you, so guide our minds, so fill our imaginations, that we may have insight into your purposes for our county, and wisdom and determination in providing for its future. That in all our works begun, continued, and ended in you, we may glorify you in our care for all your people. All this we ask in your holy name. Amen.
Amen.
Commissioners, you have there before you the agenda for this evening. Are there any items that you desire to add or to remove from tonight's agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the agenda for tonight.
Second. I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. Any discussion on the motion? Here and none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. The first item on the agenda tonight is petition of citizens, the agenda topics. And Commissioners, before we enter into that public comment time, I would ask that you allow me just to take a moment to, to make a few comments and recognitions, if you may. First off, I'd like to welcome each of you and thank you for your attendance here tonight and being part of this process to voice your opinions. Secondly, I'd like to also ask, if you will, out of respect, anyone that may have a cell phone, we would ask you, if you will, please to silence it, to not disturb this meeting tonight. Next off tonight, something that I fail to do oftentimes, and that is, I'd like to do it tonight, and that is to recognize our military that may be present in this room. All those who have served, may be presently serving our nation, if you will, please stand this evening. Let's give them a hand. Thank you. To those who have served, to those who will serve for freedom, I want the rest of this, of us in this room tonight, and those who may be watching... of us in this room tonight, and those who may be watching, to remember that we have the right to peacefully assemble here to express our beliefs, our opinions, which is the freedom of speech, because of those who have served this nation and our military. I will also say it is because of these men and women that we have the right to vote. That right was not given to us by any politician. It was given to us by these men and women who have served. I say to you, may God bless you, for those who have stood this evening, and God bless those who will come after you, to secure life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness for the American people. Tonight, we have a long list of citizens who have signed to speak under public comment concerning agenda items that will be considered by this Board of Commissioners. We have over two hours of public comment. It is your right this evening, as Craven County citizens and as Americans, to address this Board of Commissioners. The seven of us that sit here to listen to your comments tonight, we come here to, to listen. We want to hear what you have to say. We also, I want you to know, have taken into consideration what has already been relayed to us this past week, by your emails, your phone calls, your letters, and even by personal visits. Tonight, for the record, I'd like to state, if the clerk will please enter it into the record, far as emails that we have received as of four fifteen this evening, and the clerk stopped it, far as public record, there are more, I do know, that have come in since then. We had a hundred and thirty emails in favor of the resolution that will be considered, and we had seventy-one emails against the resolution to be considered. We were also presented, Commissioner Booker, when he presented this to the board, he had a petition that was signed by over two hundred some Craven County citizens, asking to support a resolution opposing CRT. And today, we were presented, before I came into this meeting, a petition that has been signed by over nine hundred citizens from Craven County opposing the resolution that will be considered. I have gone through some of that, I have not time, had time to go through all of it, and I have read over some of those names. Commissioners, any of you desiring to see any of this information, it is here for your, for you to look at, and I encourage you to do so. What I'm going to ask, though, of each of you, and I plead with you this evening, as chairman of this Board of Commissioners, but also as a fellow citizen, is we're here this evening to express the right that we have been given. But at the end of the day, let us all show respect towards each other. The same will be from this board and our comments, and I ask you to please show respect for each other. This afternoon, you will be, this evening, you will be called according to the place on which you signed up, on the sheet as you came in, and you will be given three minutes, as we always do, under public comment, to share your comments. And I would ask you also to please respect the time that has been allotted for you to speak. The county manager will call the speaker's name, and at that time, we would ask you to come forward to the podium, to the microphone, if you will. It will be stated by him for the record, but also, if you will, to state your name and address also, so we can make sure that your comments are heard and your name goes with them. So at this time, commissioners, are there any concerns before we enter into that time of public comment? Here none? Mr. County Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First name on the list is Denise Powell.
Good evening. Good evening, commissioners. Thank you for this opportunity to stand before you. My name is Denise Powell, reside at Seventeen zero three, Oster Drive. I see that you have already received petitions with the nine hundred and forty-one signatures on it. Since that time, we have received seventy additional, and they continue to come in. So I stand here before you on behalf of those concerned citizens that have signed these petitions, to urge you, our commissioners, to not take any action regarding the critical race theory or other educational tools regarding our racial history. It's time for untold truths to be taught, eyes open, stereotypes torn down, and a better understanding of people that look different than ourselves, to bring light to our troubled racial history. So I am going to be brief, so in the words of the late Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., "The time is always right to do what is right." Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, again, I appreciate your passion for the comments that will be made tonight, and we all respect that. But due to the timeframe, I do ask you to please refrain from any response of anybody that speaks. I, I plead with you to do that this evening. All right, Mr. County Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The next speaker is Joan Floyd.
Good evening. My name is Joan Floyd, and I live at one one seven Innis Brook Court here in New Bern, and I'm speaking in support of your resolution. According to an article in our local newspaper, The Sun Journal, recently, which quoted House Bill three twenty-four defining critical race theory as, and I quote, "Promoting concepts such as one race or sex is inherently superior to another race or sex. An individual solely by virtue of his or her race or sex is inherently racist, sexist, or oppressive, whether consciously or unconsciously, and an individual's moral character is necessarily determined by his or her race or sex." Try telling that to the Olympic medalists Simone Manuel, Simone Biles, and Flojo. We, as educators, parents, and community leaders, have spent a generation teaching individual values, morality, and work ethics, not color of skin. We have spent a generation teaching children that it matters not what you look like, but what decisions you make, how hard you are willing to work, and what values you have within you to determine your success or failure. In the recent Olympics, it was the images of the gold medal Ecuadorian bike rider and the gold medal Tunisian swimmers that provided examples of what the Olympics should be and are. Critical race theory or any doctrine with similar tenets would negate that and instead divide the next generation. Let us teach our children and strive ourselves to learn that it is your efforts, your decisions, that determine your future, your accomplishments, or your success. And recently, nationally prominent brain surgeon, politician, and statesman, Dr. Ben Carson, was interviewed on network TV, and he said, quote, "According to critical race theory, the primary determinant of what happens to you in life is your race, something you have no control over," end quote. He then continued, "That is just not true. Character is the most important." And, oh, by the way, I forgot to mention, he is African-American. Let us strive that instead of using terms like black policeman, black athlete, or African-American commissioner, we learn to use terms like policeman, athletes, and commissioner. The next generation is depending on us. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, James Jackson.
Good evening. My name's James Jackson. I live at one zero one Fald Court here in New Bern, that's in the taberna. A lot of people are going to talk about race tonight. What I'd like to talk about is the abandonment of standards of academic truth. I'm going to refer to critical race theory as CRT. CRT is, everybody agrees, is not a science. It's not being presented as a philosophy, although it appears to be so, but it's being sold as an analytical tool. It's not been submitted as a science because it can never withstand scrutiny, it's not being submitted as a philosophy, because then we would really know what it is. So they call it an analytical tool, and the question is, why do they call it that? Because there are standards of academic truth applied when public school curriculum is considered. If CRT was submitted as a subject of political philosophy, it would not be appropriate for treatment at the K through twelve levels. In order to understand what it really is, you should read the writings of the foremost pro-CRT expert, lady named Gloria Ladsen Billings. She wrote a foreword to a book entitled Critical Race Theory in Education, in favor of critical race theory. She, she submitted parts of the book, but she wrote the foreword, which means she was the one who told us what it was about. This is what she said. CRT is about storytelling. That's often seen as problematic, and I'm quoting, "Because it is regarded as unscientific and subjective, but CRT never makes claims of objectivity or rationality. Rather, it sees itself as an approach to scholarship that integrates lived experience with racial realism." At the same time, they call CRT an analytical tool, they say it never makes claims of objectivity or rationality. An analytical tool has one purpose, analysis, but there is no such thing as credible academic analysis without either objectivity or rationality. Our schools are entrusted to teach truth to the nation's children, only in the worst tyrannies are children subjected to public schools, which openly declare that objective truth is to be rejected for whatever truth the government invents.
Patty Mason.
My name's Patty Mason, I live at one twenty twelfth Woods. I'm here to speak. Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair, and fellow citizens. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm here, I am in favor of the resolution. I'm against critical race theory and all of its derivatives, to include culturally responsive training, cultural reactive teaching, and other derivatives, just like in Common Core, where the name was changed to keep going. As in many divisive training, as many have said, or are going to say, divisive training is not needed of any kind in our schools. Children will come up with it on their own, and they don't need that training. All a child needs to hear is that they are a gift to be treasured. They need to hear they are valued, because they are, not what they've done, or what they can do, or what they can say, or not say, or anything, just because they are. What they can say or do does detract, but they are still a gift. And it is good that the county made this resolution government-wide, just as the schools, because each of you are also a gift to be treasured, to be valued, just as, just as each child is. Yes, we may disagree, we may need to rethink, but each of you are a gift to me, and I value it. The other part of CRT is equal outcome v. equal opportunity. Simone Biles was being judged harsher than her competitors, because she was about ready to walk away with every gold medal in her events, so the Olympic Committee came up with a new grading standard just for her and the other competitors. That was wrong, just wrong. They condemned her for being the best, for her individuality, and I'm disappointed and ashamed that our country did not even speak out against this. My support is that the father of the other competitor who won gold thanked Simone Biles for his dropping out, so his daughter could get a gold. That's sad. I leave you with two Bible verses. One, Genesis twenty-six and twenty-seven. "God said, let us make mankind in our image and in our likeness. He created all man," and I'll skip ahead. God never mentioned race, he never mentioned divisions. He saw that what he had made was good, all was good, all means all. And then Romans, because professing themselves to be wise, they became fools, and they changed the glory of the incorruptible God into an image that made like corruptible man, and it went on. God did not create the corruption, man did, by turning to elevate himself to God. How often can we not accept our position and then later only realize it was good and better than where we ended up? Why do we repeat the insanity? Finally, why does God allow this? As a metalworker, the metalworker keeps refining the metal until he sees his image. God says the same. He refines us till he sees his image.
Thank you.
Will Farmer.
Yo. All right. Good evening, commissioners. My name is Will Farmer. I live at one twenty-two Turkey Quarter Creek Road over in Cove City. I come before this panel this evening in support of the resolution banning divisive concepts such as critical race theory from being taught in the Craven County school system. Why? For starters, these theories shift focus from equality to equity, thus enabling accusations of America's institutions of being systematically racist and of having systemic bias. This ideology allows certain groups to continue their decades-long assault on America and her institutions. As children of God and as Americans, we all have equal opportunity to make something of ourselves, regardless of how one defines that something. However, we are not guaranteed equal results due not only to factors we have no control over, such as decisions made by one's parents before conception and birth, but factors we can control, namely our own words and views. The belief that all are entitled to equal results, no matter what, is both illogical and recklessly arrogant. Concepts like CRT offer a thousand-word explanations for ten-word ideas. Don't believe me? Here's a summary of critical race theory. All whites are racist, and America is inherently irredeemably evil. These theories focus obsessively on America's sins, which do exist, while downplaying or ignoring necessary context, such as the fact that virtually every nation in existence practiced slavery at some point, and America was among the first nations to fight a war to end slavery. There's a difference between teaching historical facts and forcing a particular interpretation of those facts on students. Educators don't need to teach that America is fundamentally oppressive, any more than they need to teach that it is fundamentally righteous. Both views obscure rather than illuminate the complex truth of America's history. A quote from a recent Fox News piece, "CRT redefines reality to assign guilt and blame based solely on race. Classifying persons in such a manner is literally the definition of racism." Those are the words of Dr. Ben Carson. If your theory requires that you manipulate the English language and focus exclusively on one aspect of history, then is it really worth being taught to anyone? A final reason for my support for the resolution is that these concepts that alleged intellectuals attempt to pass off as history actively encourages the woe-is-me mentality that is poisonous to one's soul. If Craven County's Board of Education, as well as its teachers, are remotely interested in educating rather than indoctrinating their students, they would reject this ideology for the racist, or revisionist, race-baiting garbage that it truly is. Thank you.
Marshall Williams.
Good evening, commissioners, staff, citizens of Craven County. I bring you greetings and prayers. My name is Marshall Williams, residence of one oh two Nuchentail Road, Seventh District of the Honorable Denny Boucher. I am the current president of the MLK Outreach Ministry here in New Bern, and I came here as a nonpartisan advocate for, to represent Dr. King's dream and his lifelong work for justice. I wrote each commissioner an email on CRT. And my background as an African-American, I want to say, basically CRT is U.S. history, and what is done tonight and what is recorded tonight will be local CRT history. My own concern is to address the demonstrators that carry signs with Dr. King's likeness on them. One of the signs had Dr. King, character, and one had CRT. The one had CRT skin color. Another one had CRT culturism and a picture. And I thought the picture was Frederick Douglass. When I looked at it again, I think it was Mussolini. And the phrase was either racism or fascism. Another sign is no CRT in our schools and PS vote. Firstly, I want to thank Reverend King and Frederick Douglass, who was here the day when they carried those signs. I want to read a couple quotes from Dr. King. Darkness cannot drive out darkness. Only light can drive out light. Hate cannot drive out hate. Only love can do that. Our lives begin and end the day we begin to be silent about things that matters. King said that time is always right to do the right thing. Commissioners, I request that you table this vote until a credible curriculum is established by the state of North Carolina or the Board of Education, and until it trangles down to Craven County. I see no need in voting on the resolution. That's a myth, a possible fairy tale, right now in this county, Craven County. Dr. King said we must be timed and be creative, acknowledge that the time is always right to do what's right, and a lie cannot live. Thank you.
J.F. Sternagel.
Hello, I'm Joe Sternagel from New Bern, 417 Boros Road. What is CRT? I trust you've all read the tenets of CRT. It's Marxism. Teaching it in our schools is a big step towards Marxism. This country has a lot of black eyes. We've addressed a lot of them. We've fixed some of them. Don't throw the baby out with the bathwater here. There's a lot in my Bible that tells parents how to raise their kids. I don't see one word there that tells the state how to raise their kids. I just pray that my grandkids are gonna have the benefit of parents, instilling their values, that they grow up in a country that's free, free to think. No penalties for thinking. We can't be teaching this in our schools. Thank you.
Susan Cook.
I'm Susan Jackson Cook, and I live at 1230 Bryce's Creek Road. Thanks for the opportunity to speak about this important issue. We all have a stake in the education of our children and youth. The future of our country lies in their hands. They will surely need critical thinking abilities to listen and weigh varying viewpoints and reach their own conclusions. This in no way indoctrinates and will actually help students reach their full potential. Because of this and the importance of education as a public good for all of us, I oppose this resolution. First, we have a school board elected by our voters. This issue should be handled by the duly-elected school board. Secondly, I believe a lot of confusion and misinformation exists about what CRT is and action civics. What it means and the impact it could have. I believe this misinformation and confusion is reflected in the resolution and the lack of understanding of what it is. Passing this resolution, very importantly, or more seriously, could have, at any level, a chilling effect on our teachers. Can a teacher who wants to talk about the facts of history, the dark facts and the positive facts of the Wilmington Race Riots, the segregated school systems, be held in violation of CRT? My teachers not self-censor out of concern for parental or administrative complaints. This could be quite likely and therefore shortchanging our children. We all agree our children and youth need to learn about the noble ideals and aspirations in our history and our great achievements. I hope we also agree that our youth at age-appropriate levels need to learn about the undeniable flaws and the failures in our founding and our history and the impact these have had. Only then will they strive to do better and move our country forward, closer to our aspirations. Values aren't just a bumper sticker. They need to govern our actions. This leads to true patriotism, loving our country, acknowledging our errors, expressing regret, and striving to improve. The same pattern is also a major teaching in the Judeo-Christian heritage of many of us here tonight. Face our darkest spots, express regret, and struggle on to improve. Do not pass this resolution tonight.
Lynda Moore.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity. I'm Lynda Moore of 1442 River Shore Drive, New Bern. I am also the Chair of the Craven County Democratic Party. I want you to know, the Democratic Party did not push or encourage the petition you have before you. That was brought forth by concerned citizens who asked to support them. There are over a thousand people that have asked these Commissioners not to move forward with this petition. I think it is important to note that in 2018, the Board of Commissioners refused to move forward on the Equal Rights Amendment because you said you had no jurisdiction. This board has no jurisdiction over what happens in our county schools. Additionally, as was in the Sun Journal, I believe it was last week, the new school superintendent already stated, critical race theory, action civics, and the 1619 Project are not taught, not only in Craven County schools, but nowhere in North Carolina. I think it's important to remember that, and we're taking actions that are really not necessary. And I hope you will not take action on this tonight.
George Evans.
Good evening. I'm George Evans. I live at 216 Metcalf Street in New Bern. I ask that you reject the CRT resolution before you. It describes a curriculum's problem, which is not shown by anyone to actually exist in North Carolina. It's a fictional problem. CRT is not taught in our schools. That's been confirmed by our own superintendent. As previously stated by many, this commission has no authority over school curriculum. It's not in your jurisdiction. What this resolution has done is encourage negative feelings within the community. Witness all these people here tonight that have feelings about this one way or the other. Our history should not be sanitized to avoid offending the delicate ears of our students. Our history should be taught honestly and truthfully. As best we can tell, that's what's being done now. Our community does need help from this commission on a number of issues. For example, how many people here in this room tonight have not been vaccinated? How many people in our community have not been vaccinated? If we have an outbreak of COVID like last year, our tourism business will plummet, and this community will suffer financially. Those are the kinds of things that you all have the capability of doing. And I urge you to direct your efforts to that sort of activity rather than dealing with problems with school board curriculum, which don't exist. Thank you.
Glenn Fink.
Glenn Fink, 646 Goose Creek Road. I'm emphatically in favor of the resolution opposing division series and all the other things in the title. My Christian faith is against division in all forms, which is the basis of the ideology that you are standing against. How can anyone be against a nondiscrimination resolution? Those against a nondiscrimination resolution appear to be in support of at least some forms of discrimination. It pains me to even write or reference the Sun Journal about the narratives they print are just plain wrong. Beyond their political bias, they get simple facts wrong and even contradict themselves in the same article. I say that to say passing this resolution cannot be characterized as strictly symbolic. The Craven County Board of Commissions are leaders of our county. Clearly stating your position against this cultural movement is critical to the future of our county. Our schools are a priority target for driving this movement into our culture. This should not be a surprise, since it's the very strategy to move many ill-conceived policies and perspectives into our culture. Lenin said, "Give me just one generation of youth, and I'll transform the whole world." This movement continues the longtime effort to tear our children away from their parents. But this is not just about schools. It is a Marxist strategy to fundamentally transform our society and destroy our constitutional republic. This is being pushed through every fabric of our society. I previously shared the book of Fault Lines by Vadi T. Bacham Jr. related to our churches. Many corporations are going woke, apparently believing this is the best business strategy. Our military are being trained on this movement. God protect our nation. Passing this resolution will hopefully provide our school board the encouragement and strength to clearly state their position on this movement. Many school board members and Dr. Miller have shared they are against sowing division in our schools. They emphatically state they are not teaching the tenets of this movement in our schools. They have been asked to consider writing and passing a resolution to cement their positions and update policies to enforce. I believe they are technically correct in what they've shared to the public. But I also know individual teachers can and have gone it alone on this very topic. Misinformation is commonly shared that those who oppose CRT do not want all our history taught in our schools. That is hogwash. We want all of it taught, the good, the bad, and the ugly. We do not want, we just do not want it to be used as a tool to divide, which is what this is all about.
Charles Dudley.
Good evening, Commissioners, people. My name is Charles Dudley. I live at 1922 Ferry Road in Hamluk in the Harlow District. I am a retired United States Marine, and I currently pastor. Been pastoring now for about nineteen years. I was raised by my parents, and of course, you already know that, because you raise your own kids too. I think that was humor. But my parents always told us that we never had to be afraid of the truth. Whatever the truth is, just tell the truth. And of course, being young, there were times we found out that when we told the truth, the truth did hurt. Because we had to pay the price for doing the things that we did. But knowing the truth, what the Bible says for us, because somebody else is quoting Scripture, if we know the truth, the truth sets us free. And sometimes, I think it's important for us to realize that there was this guy a long time ago. His name was Edmund Burke. And he said, or he's often quoted as having said, that those who fail to learn from history are doomed to repeat it. I don't know about you, but some of the history that we have gone through, I don't want to repeat. Might have been good for you. Wasn't good for me, my family. So we don't want to repeat those things. And I think the truth sometimes is ugly, but the truth is the truth. Truth is not divisive. Truth is simply truth. Half truths are deceptive. Story told in Genesis, Chapter 12, talking about Abraham and Sarah when they were going into a particular place, and Abraham was recognizing how good-looking his wife was. And he told her to, you know, "We don't want you to tell them that you're my wife. Tell them you're my sister, because if we tell the truth, they're gonna kill me." And ultimately, they deceived them, but it almost caused Sarah to be raped. Truth causes a lot of pain. Somebody said that God created us, and he said it was very good. That's true. But it wasn't God that said we were bad. It was one man said that one man is less of a man than another man. That's deception. That's a lie. I even heard outside, I heard someone talking about how true history is a bogus issue and how truth is, it'll put our children against each other. That's a lie. I think our children to grow up, our children can accept the truth. Our children want to know what's going on with that child over there. Why is that child different from me? So I think we simply just need to tell the truth. I heard where someone said, "Truth is an inferior education." Can you believe that? It was County Commissioner that said that, one of you. The truth is an inferior education. I heard it tonight. Take no edge.
Hazel Dozier.
Good evening, fellow Commissioners, citizens of Craven County. I stand before you. My name is Hazel Dozier. I am from 218 Rankin Court in the Carolina Pines neighborhood. I'm originally from the Harlow District, so I speak in favor of the Harlow District as well as my neighborhood. I am a thirty-year-retired history teacher. I have a master's in history. And of course, I told someone earlier, I said, "If they need me to go back and teach critical race history, I'll do it." I've taught it for thirty years. Critical race theory has been my mantra for thirty years. Ask any of my students. I taught twenty-seven years in high school. I taught three years in middle school, then I transitioned out. And today, I stand to you and before you to oppose this resolution. Teaching critical race theory has been my history. This is what I do. I've lived it also. I'm totally baffled and perturbed by the reaction of educated people, people from this county, people from this country, people from this state. I am baffled of their reaction to the critical race theory. Education is always positive. I'm an educator. In educating, you know it is a positive thing, whether it is good or bad. Don't sweep it under the rug. Education is positive. To learn something is always a positive. Frederick Douglass once said, "Without knowing one's history, there can be no appreciable future." Important words, and I quoted him often. How are we gonna appreciate our future? How are the kids in this state or this county gonna appreciate their future? We must look at the truth, as Bishop was just saying. As we study history in this country, CRT will enhance. It's not gonna divide. It's gonna enhance and help us to understand each other even more. I've had that experience for thirty years. I've seen my students. I've written, I've directed plays, and we have directed, put them on in five different counties that I've lived in and I've taught in. You should see the excitement of children when they are learning something that they do not know. The problem here is, we all fear the unknown. We are afraid of the unknown. They did not know for a long time. They did not know what was within the continent of Africa. Once they discovered that... Once they discovered that, then of course we all enjoy the wealth and the beauty of Africa today. So today I stand here to tell you that children will be more accepted of this than we are. They have surpassed us. We now have started our growth here. It is so important for them to learn this, and I guarantee, because I've seen this for thirty years, they will be excited. And in doing so, they form these rap whores. Thank you for your teaching.
Stephanie Jones.
I reside at 3200 Branville Court here in New Bern. I do not rise to convince you to vote for or against the resolution on tonight's agenda, even though I firmly believe it should finally be rejected. With cynicism, I suspect that many of the minds are already made up. Besides, I do not possess the nail-clinching factoid that you've not heard that will change the mind of any of you. Rather, I rise to speak of the good, the bad, and the ugly. A decade ago, I was a complacent right-of-center citizen. I believed that when needed, even mediocre, men and women would rise to the challenges of the time and do what was right by all of us. These six years, past six years, have disabused me of that fiction. Let me explain. I was once seen as a man whose particular difficulties were, for the most part, of my own making. When my difficulties came to be from the outside, they did not target me with any specificity. I now move in the world as a transgender woman, arguably placing me among the most targeted groups of human beings in all the world. In the words of Joni Mitchell, "I have seen life from both sides now. I've looked at life from both sides now." And I can tell you, it looks very different from the different vantage points. All is not well. There is division in this country. Some of us are in good places, some of us are in very bad places. I've seen the ugly for four years now. While the president abused us and used us as a stick to poke the hornet's nest that is his voting base, the ugliness continues to this, as a too-close-to-home exemplar of much more ugliness directed at others with whom I now sympathize and stand. Regarding the resolution, this fray is really about the lives we value in our society, whose stories we tell to our children, whose histories we recall as guides to our future as a nation, and whose we do not value when told. Thank you.
I'm Nell Hudson, and my address is 301 Fairway Drive, New Bern. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm here tonight as a parent of a rising HJ McDonald eighth grader and as a former high school history teacher, having taught in Wake and Edchcombe Counties. Please vote against this resolution. The new social studies standards were adopted by the North Carolina State Board of Education, not to sow discord, but to better tell the story of all North Carolinians. While our history is not easy to tell, if we do not tell it as authentically as possible, we will be harming our children by not properly preparing them with the historical tools and inspiration needed to be the business entrepreneurs, the scholars, military, and political leaders that our country and this world desperately needs. Resolutions like this one harm and intimidate our local public school teachers by dictating to them what and how to teach and which materials they can and cannot use in the classroom. I studied and taught history because I wanted to help foster peace, peace through understanding. And I'm concerned about the level of anger and distrust that I'm seeing in our community. When I was in college, an American diplomat told my German Studies class that history doesn't repeat itself, rather, history is like a spiral staircase. And right now feels troubling because it's reminiscent of past times of troubled nations. We have big issues to tackle so that America, this great unfinished symphony, can continue to be a world leader. But this work starts locally, and resolutions that cloud the truth about our public schools only divide and distract our community, keeping us from the hard work that we need to be doing. Please vote against this resolution. Thank you.
Amen. God bless you, brother. Been a long time since I seen you. 1981 Streets Fairway Road, basketball, North Carolina. The Bible says to think upon these things. Think about what's going on, our nation's in crisis, and I've heard people talk and they beat around it. But Martin Luther King said, "I dreamed that one day that this nation would not judge people because of color of their skin, but by the content of their character." There's always time to be right. Says today is the day that residents in our CRT today is taking up residence in our classrooms, government, corporate America. It is a Marxist agenda. It's being pushed by our children not to look at those who they are, but for the skin color. We must teach our children we are wonderfully made by our Creator. This nation is based on the Constitution that all men are created equal. CRT does not align with Christian beliefs. CRT is brutally grounded in a Godless agenda. The goal is to bind America to be driven by mischief and teach our children to hate and distrust. CRT represents the greatest threat to an institution of the family. It grabs LGBT community, grabs onto the idolatry, the transgender issue. It trains our children to be social justice warriors and to change America and its history and break it down from this great foundation. We must humble ourselves and remember what Isaiah says, said, "The truth has fallen in the streets." Truth is what we need today. Stand on the word of God. We must demand our citizens of this great land that our elected officials stand against CRT and their slanderous lies, that they are presenting a diet of deception. Our kids are being told that they are not created by God, that this universe is self-sufficient. There's one thing that we can all agree on. We are all just one family in the family of God. And I'd like to say, some people, when they look at this, as I said, think upon these things. Some people are so narrow-minded that they can look through a peephole with both eyes. Some people are narrow-minded when they read this and can't understand, and I'll say it again, we're all just one family, and that's the family of God. Amen?
Rayner James.
I'm Rayner James. I live at 305 Calico Drive in Craven County. Well, we have heard that CRT has been taught in at least five counties. No matter what they're calling it today, whether it's critical race theory, whether it's the 1619 Project, whether it's social and emotional learning with the included data-taking from children and teens, where the school people actually try to get their students to share personal, private information about their parents and their families, almost like Nazi Germany, which is sad. We realize that CRT really does try to teach some children, because of the color of your skin, you do not have a chance in this world. You might as well throw up your hands and give up. It teaches other children with a different color, because of the color of your skin, you are inherently evil. No matter what you say or do, you can never be on the right side of things. I call this duck child abuse, and we don't need child abuse in our schools. The time is always right to do what is right. I hope you will take that into account when you make your decision tonight. I strongly support this marvelous resolution you have in front of you. I'm very grateful for it. Our history has been shepherded, but when our country was being formed, slavery was a thing that was happening all over the world. American Indian tribes captured people from other American Indian tribes and enslaved them. Tribes in Africa enslaved people from other African tribes and enslaved them. Muslims enslaved people in all sorts of places just because they weren't Muslim. The world was a very harsh, cruel, rough place. We've come a long way from that. We need to be honest about it. We need to appreciate our strengths. We've gotten very far from the terrible things that we did at one point in time, but the American South did not originate the problem. The American South has been part of the solution in recent years. I'm proud of us. We're good people. We're generous people. Please pass the resolution.
I'm Hal James, and I also want to speak in favor of that resolution. Just heard from my wife, Rayner. These sixty-one years of marriage has come in August. I want to tell you that we have two sons. They're both white. We have two daughters-in-law, one white, one half-white. We have four grandchildren, two white, two that are three-fourths white, and one is named Hal James. We have four great-grandchildren, two are white and two are non-white. I've had two non-white next-door neighbors. I have many black friends, among them I've considered Commissioner Thorne Cade is a good friend of mine. I'm very fortunate to have been a friend of Commissioner Johnny Sampson. I love Raven Sampson, Ethel Sampson over there, and she loves me back, that's for sure. I believe firmly, I haven't read everything about the CRT, but what I do know about it, I feel like I agree with the gentleman that says it was a plot. I think it's a socialist plot to ruin our country by pitting one race against another, and it just isn't right. And I hope you'll vote in favor of this resolution that you're considering to let all the citizens of Craven County know that you don't support it. Rayner and I could have, after forty-three years, four months, and ten days in the military, Rayner and I could have located any place in the United States, and we knew a lot of places in the United States. We've selected this city and Craven County because of the people that are here, the wonderful people, and we need to get along with each other and not be taught and torn apart. Thank you.
Kate Blakefield.
I'm Kate Blakefield. I live at 3706 Darby Road in Trent Woods. I live in a wonderful neighborhood. My neighbors are from all over the country. On my street alone, we have people born in New Bern, people from Chicago, New York, Ohio, and Maryland. Our neighbors are black, white, and Asian. Their politics are not as important to me as the fact that they are my neighbors. We care about and look out for each other. New Bern is like that. Whether we live here or we are tourists, we all come from different backgrounds and
...and carry on the business tonight. There's a lot of people here that want to speak and be heard, and by doing that, again, it's your constitutional right, but I'm asking you, please, to show the respect tonight so everybody has an opportunity to speak that wants to. So, thank you. You may continue. Please start the clock back.
Okay. I don't know where you last heard me. It's quite short, so I may repeat myself. My neighbors, I live in a wonderful neighborhood, people from all over the country. My neighbors are black, white, and Asian. Their politics are not as important to me as the fact that they are my neighbors. We care about and look out for each other. New Bern is like that. Whether we live here or we are tourists, we all come from different backgrounds, we have different beliefs, and we mostly get along and tolerate each other. This resolution does not further that harmony. It is unnecessary. CRT is not taught in our schools, nor are there plans to teach it. I was an educator for thirty-five years. I've substitute taught in Craven and Carteret County for the last ten years. If this resolution is passed, you are going to offend and divide people for no purpose whatsoever. The petition with over one thousand signatures presented to you tonight is evidence of that. I'm not arguing here the merits or flaws of CRT. I'm asking you to consider the wisdom of this resolution. Instead of involving yourselves in culture wars, you need to celebrate our lovely town and protect its reputation as a great place to live and visit. You do not need to invite controversy and division. Please vote no or present on this resolution. Thank you.
Good evening, commissioners. I live at 1906 Cayenne Court in New Bern. I hadn't really planned on spending another summer night with you guys. As far as I can tell, honestly, this whole thing is outside your job description, and I wish we could just, you know, settle it with that. It would be great if we could have dialogue and really listen deeply to one another, but I don't know if we're doing that tonight, but this is outside what you were elected to do, I believe. Anyway, I do have a few opinions to share. You all might know I'm a Democrat. You might not know that I'm a clinical social worker and that I'm a person of faith. And it's those two parts of my identity that shape the brief thoughts that I want to share with you. Sweeping things under the carpet is most always easier in the short run. We've all done that. Ultimately, denial and avoidance are very costly. When our history of racism and its impact on our country get lost in our conversations, we pay a big price for them. I still believe the truth will set you free. When individuals and organizations or even larger systems are willing to genuinely acknowledge wrongdoing, we all have a better chance for real healing, real reconciliation, and real immunity. Let's work on deeper reconciliation and unity, folks. Thank you.
Michael Schachter.
My name is Michael Schachter.
Good evening, county commissioners. My name is Michael Schachter. I live at seventeen eleven Tuscarora Rims Road in Craven County. As has been stated earlier, the purpose of this resolution is to create division for cynical and supposedly political gain, because none of these things in the resolution that are mentioned are taught in the Craven County schools. I would like to, instead, I would like to tell you a story about what should be taught to our children. A story about a small, introverted white student who learned in history and current events that black people were being denied their right to vote, that they were being segregated in schools, housing, and jobs, and that this was being done to them by white people. This did not make him feel suppressed or ashamed, because he knew he was not doing any of those things. He also knew that those things were wrong. And when he learned that black students were being arrested in the struggle for freedom, he summoned up some courage to speak out. He went to a public meeting, like this one, a town hall, and with his voice cracking, he asked that people stand up and support the students' struggle. And that made him feel empowered, and it helped direct his life for the next sixty years. So I say to you white parents, if you truly want your children to feel good about themselves, teach them the truth about racial inequalities and inequities, past and present, and that they have the power to change things. They will learn the truth, and the truth shall set them free. And another thing, it is reprehensible that some people who have, who might have called Martin Luther King a radical, dangerous adjutant, quote him now. Out of context of the struggle for social and against, social justice and against militarism. I know the true context, because I marched for jobs and freedom with Dr. King and John Lewis, and the truth will set you free. Thank you.
Linda Wong Seidler.
Thank you. My name's Linda Wong Seidler. I live at nineteen eighty-seven Acorn Drive in New Bern. I'm here because I oppose this resolution. It's, it's part of our history, and it's not even being taught in, in the school, but it is part of the history, and I don't think we should try to eliminate history or even try to whitewash it. We need to learn from our history. We need to know where we've been so that we know where we can go. And if you don't know where, you're going to have, repeat the same mistakes. And we need to make our future better, not worse. And I even had doubts tonight about coming to this, this meeting for a couple of reasons. One is, I did feel that this was a board of education, pardon, decision, or whatever you want to call it. I didn't see where the, it was the commissioner's job to, for this. And the other reason I almost didn't come was because I've had both shots, and I still wear my mask when I'm here with all these people. And maybe y'all should be requiring people to wear their masks, or if they haven't had their shots, wear them if they have. Anyway, thank you very much.
Jim Hackett.
Good evening, commissioners. I appreciate this opportunity. My name is Jim Hackett. I live at two oh-seven Fairmount Way in New Bern, and you all can come by and visit me anytime you want. I'm also deacon of St. Paul Catholic Church and the Board Chair of Faith Connection, a local multi, multi-faith, multicultural nonprofit who's members of People of Faith, and we're committed to working together for the benefit of our community. But tonight, I stand before you as citizen Jim Hackett. It seems that once again, our community, as well as our great nation, has taken a single issue and turned it into a four-letter word. I'm not sure if the majority of Americans today truly understand what CRT is. I'm not even sure if many people here in this room tonight do either. But once again, people on opposing sides of this issue stand across the line from each other and wave signs, protest, and scream and shout at each other, and no one is having a conversation. No one is listening to each other. No one is taking the time to understand one another. And once again, in what has become America's new form of debate, each side continues to pour more and more disinformation over the truth until the truth becomes unrecognizable, if it's even visible at all. The country, which I love so very much, has a rich history, but it's not a perfect history. After all, we humans are not perfect creations. So this imperfect history has not been fully covered or disclosed in our classrooms. History books are not meant to be editorials or opinion pieces. Our history books should recount the who, what, when, and where. All of the who, what, when, and where. And when that is done, without compromise or personal or political agendas or opinions, when that is done, then the reader, the student, will know the why. Let us begin to teach the truth and the facts, all the facts, all of them. The truth is not to be denied or hidden. It is time for us to begin to teach the truth, and nothing but the truth. So help us, God. I thank you.
Jericho Baker.
Good evening, everyone. I'm not here to defend CRT, nor am I here to oppose it. What I'm going to do is oppose this ridiculous resolution itself. See, I don't think y'all read it all that well, because it doesn't ban, it's not seeking to ban exclusively critical race theory actions in the Sixty Minutes Project. It wants to ban all divisive theories. I want you to think real hard about what that might mean. Is it sober or pop? Do we ban that? Well, we, because everything is divisive when you really think about it. Everything, every topic, every issue, whether or not I was equal to a white man was divisive at one point, and Martin Luther King was killed over that. Everything is divisive, and y'all know that. That's why you use this very vague language. You want to try to have it both ways, but you can't. Because once you open that Pandora's Box, it applies to everyone and everything, every topic. So that's all I got to say. Think real hard about that before you approve this.
Mr. Chairman, we're halfway through the list. I don't know if you, if we'd like a break.
All right. It's eight thirteen. We'll take a five-minute break, and we'll come right back. Eight thirteen, that means fourteen, eighteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen. How you doing?
Hey, who's the guy that lives in James City that comes into New Bern and walks every morning? He said he lives in, by Greensprings, in New Bern.
The list. I'm on the list, and I'd like to scratch for myself if I do that.
He, he was raised right here, right here.
Forty-six.
And then he moved to Virginia.
That's, that's the right guy.
And he's retired by the end of the year. Yeah. I read, he has two siblings, and the three of them have Carter's son, yeah.
Ronnie.
Ronnie Cahoon. His brother's named Lynn, L-Y-N.
Spencer.
Yeah.
Probably golfing.
Okay.
Baiting him up.
That's it.
You all too.
Yeah, I know all them.
No, I just want to know how far I am down the list. They put me last, and I'm like, you know, you always want the final say-so in closing arguments.
I feel sad. Tortured.
First.
Hey, Raina, get your car running. We might have to run out and get in.
No, it was your buddy. Well, he texted me and said he wouldn't be here.
I'll let him know when he comes back.
Okay, got it. Okay, okay. Sheriff, is that vacation? I was hoping that the county manager, the county chairman, would speak, because he's very...
Thank you for your... This should, this should never happen to me, to me.
I can't hear you. I'm sorry. Yeah, yeah, I just wanted to get it back. I have a problem.
But that mean you can't speak, but hopefully it won't get there.
Yeah. I'm telling you, we're so welcome. I gotta take a break before everybody else has to go. I gotta go. Well, yeah.
Teachers are taught how to teach. Teachers are not going to go in the classroom and start a little war.
I'm telling him a good fellow you are. Oh, yeah, I told him you were a good fellow.
That's right. That's right.
No, no, you do what you have to do. You okay, buddy? No, 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 you're doing good. Yeah. Yeah, you're back. Trying to get.
Yes, sir.
All right.
See you in Washington.
Thank you very much, commissioners, for providing us with this huge room because I don't think we would have fit over in the admin building. Um, I have a couple of questions to pose to educators, boards of education, Department of Instruction for the state. Are you planning on suing Madison Avenue? It seems that thirty to forty percent of the ads on television you hear, well, you can't see it on the radio, but on television have biracial couples, biracial families. And Madison Avenue really and truly does kind of set the pace for how we live in this country with the ads that they put out there. For products for the home, for the cars, medicine, whatever. The other question is, how does a teacher tell a biracial child that one parent is a bigot? And the other parent is oppressed? And their white side should admit that they're mean and nasty and biased? And the other side of the person is, the child is oppressed? I, I, I don't really understand it. And if this is what is going to be happening in our schools, we have got to stop it. Thank God, we don't seem to have this problem in Craven County, but it is out there in other counties and it must be stopped. Thank you.
Janice Paris.
Good evening.
Evening.
And thank you for having this forum for everyone. And I did bring a booklet with me, but I decided not to read all of it. Because part of it has Ben Carson in it, Frederick Douglass, Abraham Lincoln, and a number of other people who would side very heavily with Commissioner Booker. So I'm just going to say this. There are a lot of people today that don't realize, in our town too, what New Bern used to be like. I have been looking into its rich history and I have loved learning a great deal about a number of people. And I'm writing a novel right now about John Carruthers Stanley. He was a man who was born a slave and became the richest man in Craven County in eighteen twenty-four. And if you look at his life and what he did, I know people that think he was horrible. Because how could a slave buy other slaves? But he didn't just buy them. He trained them, educated them, and set many of them free. And I don't remember all the names of the ones he set free, but two of his barbers, that when he started off, he was a barber. And it's interesting because his owner, and I don't like to call her his mistress because that is a bad, has a bad connotation to it. But his owner taught him to read, write, and cipher when he was a young man. And she let him go down to the docks and earn money on his own. And then interned him with a barber and he became the richest barber in town. And then he bought two slaves that he trained to take over the business. And he did that with many of the slaves. And some people say, well, he just was not a Christian. He was one of the founders, if you go to the Presbyterian church, you will see his wife, I should say, and his former owner, Lydia Carruthers Stewart, as one of the founders. There are thirteen founders and they have plaques up there in the Presbyterian church for them. And I think this is something that is completely overlooked by some people who are actually the racist. And I hope that you will consider both sides. During the, during the Civil War, there were people on the Union side who fought for the slaves. And this is forgotten too, as well as Abraham Lincoln was a Republican. Thank you.
Gary Clemmons.
Good evening, commissioners.
Evening.
My name is Gary Clemmons. I live on Chincapin Road, which is in the Bryce's Creek area. I am a product of the public school system in North Carolina. I was born in North Carolina, educated in North Carolina, and I've lived in North Carolina my entire life. I practiced law for forty years, a clerk for United States District Court Judge, and I was in the Justice Department in the nineteen eighties. There is only one issue in front of you. And that is whether or not you should vote yes or no on the resolution in front of you. That is your only issue. Generally speaking, in principle, I am opposed to the only two theories which I am familiar with. And that is critical race theory and the sixteen nineteen project. In principle, I am opposed to those for this reason. No one here has actually said what the tenets of the theory is. It is a theory, it is not fact, it does not teach history. I learned history at the University of North Carolina at Chapel Hill. William S. Powell was my teacher. He wrote all the history books in North Carolina. I lived and learned and was taught the nineteen sixties, nineteen seventies, nineteen eighties, nineties, on up to the present time. Nobody here in this room is against teaching history. We are opposed to teaching theory which is not based on historical facts, which is what lawyers do. I have read multiple Law Review articles in the ADA Journal. The basic tenet of CRT is that systemic racism is institutional, not individual. It is inherent in our constitution, it is inherent in our laws, it is inherent in our education system. This is not true. We are all about teaching history. And I have learned history from the very beginning and from the best people. As to the sixteen nineteen project, I am not opposed to teaching that at the college level as a chorus for somebody to volunteer. I am opposed to teaching it to eighth graders and making them mandatory. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nelson McDaniel.
Good evening, my name is Nelson McDaniel. I live at two fourteen New Street here in New Bern. First of all, I have to say I don't see critical race theory as an urgent problem. It's an academic theory that's been around for decades. The sixteen nineteen project is a journalistic editorial which can certainly stimulate debate. I enjoy and I learn from debate. We can all learn from debate. If you're going to have one, invite me. My main concern tonight is that I don't see why this discussion belongs in a commissioner's meeting. So far as I can tell, the resolution addresses questions that are outside of commission jurisdiction. Surely, the county has enough urgent business in areas where the commission has a role that time will be better spent on them. As with the refugee resolution several years ago, it strikes me as a waste of time. People have and are entitled to diverse points of view. Wouldn't we be better served if this discussion were held in a public debate forum? Or in a presentation to the State Board of Education? I'm afraid that I must question the real motive of the resolution. Is it just an attempt to generate more heat at a time when we need vets? This resolution has no place in this forum. Please vote against it.
Nikki Potter.
Good evening, commissioners. I am baffled by this proposed resolution if this brief and vague statement must be called such. Firstly, the current curriculum of North Carolina does not include critical race theory in either part or whole. So I'm having difficulty understanding why we are meeting here tonight as though this topic is relevant to our community right now. It feels to many of us that this is a push similar to the push for a bipartisan school board from local conservatives for both power and control. A way to take buzzwords and fear and force it into every aspect of politics even where it does not belong. Though as we are here, I will share with you my thoughts. I find the claim in the resolution that CRT is a divisive replacement of U.S. history telling. Critical race theory is in no way a replacement of history, but rather an expansion of it, one that is necessary and long overdue. An examination of the complexities of historical relationships and how they echo throughout our modern life. Understanding the horrors of our past and how various minorities were treated within our country is the only sure way of moving forward into a healed future without the possibility of repeating devastating atrocities. The claim that this theory originated from the perspective of division or to cause people who racially identify as white to feel lesser than or to punish and blame them is ridiculous, especially when speaking of children. This is a perfect example of fragility and rage coupled with a lack of comprehension and information. There are shameful and disturbing moments in our history that should make us feel uncomfortable, that should call upon our empathy. To back away from those truths, to coddle ourselves, is so incredibly cowardly and disrespectful to those who have no choice but to face it every single day. It seems to me that this view of critical race theory and the subsequent push for local commissioners to vote against it is based purely in fear. Fear that the false narrative of America being a bastion of freedom and equality from the moment of its inception is in danger of being rejected, causing a decrease in patriotism. I would argue that instead of pride in our initial establishment, one that was undeniably racist, that a true understanding of our history instead inspires pride in our country for fostering and facilitating growth beyond hatred and false superiority. Pride in a country that bravely recognizes the need for truth and healing. Pride in the continuing victories of the people as we shed these outdated perceptions and move forward unified. I hope that as our commissioners, we will vote with equal bravery. Thank you.
Bailey Evans.
Good evening.
Evening.
I take issue with many aspects of the resolution before us tonight. To begin with, I don't see any evidence or explanation of this divisive curriculum changes allegedly being implemented in our schools. Neither was there evidence that such a broad and intense resolution is urgently necessary or even useful to our county. Critical race theory has been a richly researched and studied field for over four decades. I think we have some time to investigate the basics of the various concepts condemned in this resolution and their potential value or detriment to our education system before we outright ban their discussion. Instead, we are considering a vague resolution that only references a disbanded federal commission that has been widely discredited by historians. I don't see any descriptions of these theories, what they entail, and why they're unsuitable for the county. It's shallow, under-researched, and really more of a political statement than a good faith, problem-solving effort. On that note, I do not enjoy seeing our community and local leaders getting caught up in the culture war that's playing out on the national stage. I'm frustrated that we continue to engage with these party-wide power struggles when we could be focused on issues that have a material impact on our community. It's almost amusing that the resolution refers so scathingly to identity politics when this very debate is such an obvious example of identity politics run amok. We are here as a result of misinformation and fear mongering on a national scale and I urge our community to stop taking the bait. We're wasting our time arguing about graduate school theories and journalism projects instead of planning how we're going to support schools and students, not to mention the rest of the county, through the prolonged tumult of this pandemic. Proudly passing this resolution makes our community look uneducated and our leadership look blatantly partisan. Regardless of its intention, it will divide rather than unify our schools and community. It's embarrassingly without substance and relies entirely on rhetoric that encourages people to immediately retreat to their ideological corners and shake their fists at the other side. If you're concerned about division among our community, look no further than the words in front of you tonight. This resolution sets us up to be against one another, to consider our ideological opponents unpatriotic and unsuitable, to believe that we have nothing to learn from people who don't share our experience or viewpoint. Ultimately, it's an arbitrary condemnation against a catchphrase that people have recently been conditioned to vaguely fear. I'm ashamed that our local government would resolve to retreat from the marketplace of ideas and instead practice censorship, especially with such a demonstrably, demonstrably limited understanding of the concepts being banned. This is a weak and rushed effort to make a political statement and it furthers nothing other than ideological indoctrination, the very thing that it condemns. The whims of national parties should not govern our local concerns so easily. This resolution is not the best way to address the concerns of the group that petitioned for it and it's certainly not the best way to address the issues that we have in our local education system. Please do not vote in favor of this resolution tonight.
Ma'am, if you will, please give your, your address for us, please.
Certainly, thirteen thirty-two Grotton Street.
Okay. And Mr. County Manager, the speaker before that, Ms. Potter, did not give hers. Can you give that to us?
Yes, sir. It is one three five zero Trent Boulevard, New Bern, North Carolina.
Okay. I would ask, please, if you would remember when you come to the podium, again, to give your name and address. Thank you. All right?
Caitlin Trombley.
Caitlin Trombley, thirteen thirty-three Pine Valley Drive, New Bern. By a show of hands, how many of you have actually read this resolution before today? All right, that's pretty good, but you probably had to get it through the deep dark web, right? Um, it wasn't on the government website, so in the future, I beg you, please be more transparent. Please put this out there. Anyway, back to what we're here for, the resolution, which is vague. Um, I'd love to go through each line of the proposed resolution, but I don't have enough time for that. So I'm going to jump to the part of the resolution that states, "Critical race theory is quote, 'designed to indoctrinate our children by programming them to be ashamed of and divided by race and/or ethnicity.'" What exactly do you mean by this? What is critical race theory? Can you tell me the five tenets of CRT? How would you define in this resolution, because it's not there the definition, of what CRT is and what it is not? There's no real definition in this resolution. So with that, if we're going to ban it, right, what tenets would we be banning? Are we banning the books, right, are we banning writers? Um, like, what exactly is your plan, right? This is very important. This could have detrimental consequences. Most concerningly, you know, what, like I said, what are the consequences going to be if we ban this? Is it going to be like other states, like Florida, Tennessee, Texas? Um, do you plan to fire teachers if they teach quote CRT, which, you know, we don't know what it is because it's not in the resolution? Um, can Craven County even afford this given the retention rates of the teachers that we already have? One of the tenets of CRT is embracing the lived experiences of people of color, such as those preserved through writing and storytelling. So if a teacher has the class, "Read Martin Luther King Jr.," is that CRT? Because that's technically one of the tenets, right? I know that's not what you intend, right, but that could technically be CRT. Um, but ah, if we do Malcolm X, would that be CRT? You see why it's important that this resolution be more specific, that you spend more time hashing these things out before you vote on them. This whole thing is absurd and everyone should honestly feel really embarrassed that we're even remotely considering this. If I had agreed this resolution, I'd give it an F. It clearly does not show signs of critical thinking, which is quite ironic, isn't it? This is exactly why I urge you, but please, do not, just table this. You can do it later, just hash these things out more. Do not do this tonight. I beg you. And I also want to mention, at the beginning of the meeting, we talked about how men and women fought for our freedom of speech, right? We honored that. It's a beautiful thing, but here we are, sitting here censoring educational tools, which is also quite ironic. So please, do not do this tonight. Think about more. Thank you.
Robert Trombley.
Hello. My name is Robert Trombley and I live at one three 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 Pine Valley Drive in New Bern. I have an eight-year-old son in the Craven County school systems and I myself am a person who attended Craven County schools from middle school through high school. I cannot believe I have to stand here today in front of the Craven County commissioners who put forth such a vague resolution. Commissioners who put the support and supported, from what I've gathered, claim to be from the party of free speech and small government. A party I've heard echo things in the past such as, "Teachers don't raise our children, the parents do." And yet here I am watching the county commissioners attempt to stick their hands in issues they don't even fully understand if you read the resolution. Yet here I am, listening to people cry communism. Yet here I am, watching you folk believe you have no say in how your child interprets things they have learned and honestly believe teachers are indoctrinating your children. You all want to talk about free speech, censorship, and authoritarian communism? Well then, let's talk about how the commissioners are considering passing a vague resolution tonight. A vague resolution that may make teachers fear repercussions and blowback from the state for teaching true United States history and answering students' questions honestly. When I look at the proposed resolution and the tenets of CRT, it would be a vote to pass such a resolution as it stands, that is the closest thing I could find here to authoritarian communism. And if you vote to pass this resolution, you're the one who should be ashamed.
Your way now, Wushan.
Good evening and thank you for your patience on this long night. So far, you've heard my colleagues, oh, sorry.
If you will, please give your name.
I'm Joanna Wushan. I live at one oh three Cliff Ridge Road. And I'm representing a group called CASE, Creating and Sustaining Equity, here in New Bern. You've heard my colleagues talk about what's not in the resolution. Let me tell you about what is. The resolution claims that our students might be in danger of missing out on the magnificent history of the United States. The fear that our students are not being taught a thorough account of history is not unfounded. But this resolution does nothing to address that problem. Here's why. The magnificent history of the United States includes four hundred years of slave trade, unabashed genocide, and violent oppression against minorities, women, and members of the LGBTQIA community. The magnificent history of this United States includes brilliant leaders who fought for freedom, but not for all, who created a democratic republic but only allowed people who looked like them to participate. The magnificent history of this United States includes a successful coup of democratically elected leaders by white supremacists who couldn't tolerate black leaders in Wilmington, North Carolina. Carolina. These things happened. We do not need to be afraid to admit it. We cannot be afraid to admit it. We need to be afraid of forgetting it. How can we learn from the past if we refuse to acknowledge any aspects that make us uncomfortable? None of the programs listed in this resolution are inherently divisive or exclusive to a particular political ideology. There should be nothing divisive or intimidating about a thorough accounting of history or the recognition of this country's complicated past with people who do not look like those in power. No one intends to teach white children to be ashamed of their skin color. It's infuriating that this resolution and some commissioners are focused on white children potentially feeling shame or discrimination based on their skin color while pointedly ignoring that new attention to diversity in the curriculum is meant to address the actual shame and discrimination that black and brown children places. We aren't blaming today's children for the mistakes of the adults of the past, but we will blame today's adults for crippling our children with platitudes about America's unsullied and infallible brilliance when information to the contrary is readily available. Denial only allows the wounds to fester when we could be healing and progressing. We're not here to argue that any of the programs listed in the resolution are necessarily the correct path to progress, but haphazardly banning them isn't the correct path either. Thank you.
Alexis Carmen.
My name is Alexis Carmen, a resident of 3280 Highway 55 West. Critical race theory, in summary, can be described as an academic concept that recognizes that systematic racism is embedded within our society and challenges the beliefs that have kept our nation's injustices alive. CRT teaches that race is a social construct that has no association with differences in biological ability, such as intelligence or physical capabilities. Additionally, CRT advocates to uplift marginalized voices and understand the true history of our nation through research and storytelling. It is not teaching children to be ashamed of themselves because of their ancestors' decisions. It is not anti-American propaganda. It is not a threat to the United States nor this county. While CRT is not officially within the curriculum of Craven County, it asks you to analyze the history of this nation in a lens that removes the typical white narrative and to instead focus on the true foundations that built this nation: racism and inequity. Furthermore, it equips students with the tools that enables them to think critically regarding issues of race and racism. Speaking as a female African American, a 2021 salutatorian in this county, and a former student of Mrs. Hazel Dozier, CRT should not be feared. Only those who fear a loss of power will feel threatened. Thank you.
Dorothea White.
Dorothea White, 1811 Durham Street, New Bern. The origins of critical race theory is unique. It is steeped in two movements: critical legal studies and radical feminism, and began in the mid-1970s. It made its original debut at a first-ever workshop held in St. Benedict Center in Madison, Wisconsin, in 1989. CRT or the radical legal movement sought to transform relationships among race, racism, and power was created as a response to critical legal studies, the legal movement that challenges liberalism, denying the laws were neutral and that every case had a single correct answer and that rights were of vital importance. People of color associated with the critical legal movement were marginalized. The marginalization, frustration, and dissatisfaction with CLS led to CRT being born as an issue of race forming the epicenter. Historically, CRT began to formulate a discourse that focused on issues of race and racism in the law in the same way that education scholars began to formulate a critique of race and racism in education. During the early to mid-1980s, CRT critiqued the law, society, and race. However, CRT was now grown to be expansive and a critical movement that is both inter- and cross-disciplinary, particularly in regard to education. A synoptic theory, a general view of a whole characterized by breadth of view, taking the common view specifically, then capitalizing it. The story of Goldilocks and the Three Bears. The original story, The Story of the Three Bears, was by Robert Southee. The original story was published in 1837, and it tells of a not-so-polite old woman who enters the forest home of three bachelor bears while they are away. Bet most of you've never heard this version. It sounds intriguing even to the adult mind, but the moral is to teach why we should never enter any location uninvited or against the will of the rightful owner. She, Goldilocks, intruded on the domain of others, willfully ate their food, the porridge, a break, and broke... and she broke the furnishings, the chair, and wrested from her foul play, having the audacity to disrupt order and tidiness of the home. And she went on to sleep in one of the beds, the one that was just right, you see. She tried all of the beds and chairs, but chose the one she preferred. An antagonist is one who opposes the protagonist.
Thank you for addressing the board.
Thank you.
Mr. County Manager.
Nancy Brinkley.
Thank you again for having our meeting and listening to all of us. I'm grateful that you serve us. Nancy Brinkley, 5520 Gondole Drive, New Bern, North Carolina. I'm going to start out with Shakespeare tonight, because we're all talking about education. "As a man thinketh, so is he." Seems like that's what we're looking at when we talk about theory. Is it a fact or is it a theory? I really appreciate the earlier speaker tonight. I don't know how to say it clear. I was brought up that a wall cannot talk, the microphone cannot speak, that this podium cannot think. And I was also taught that skin does not talk or think or speak. And a very famous lady who was influential in the 20th century once wrote and spoke about how if an orange is eaten completely and the skin is gone, everything about it is gone. What is left? The thought of the orange. We are all here sharing our thoughts and what thoughts we're going to teach those children. I applaud you for taking the stand to protect our children and to help our teachers raise their thoughts higher from the mud-slinging politics, to remove the agenda that wants to harm and create divisiveness. How wonderful that everybody here has said, "We want the history, the good, bad, and ugly, the history to be taught." Nobody is against that. That is phenomenal. Already, we're unifying this little town of ours or city. And I am grateful that you had this hearing to listen to us. But yes, what we're teaching them is not going to be an agenda of theories that allows people to think that a gender can talk or race can talk or have influence over thinking. We are greater people than this, and you have brought that out. Thank you so much for this meeting tonight.
Tyker Gonzalez.
Hi, Tyker Gonzalez, 125 Turkey Quarter Creek Road in Cove City. Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. I come before you tonight with a different view to address the resolution on critical race theory. I am 100% in favor of this resolution to stop CRT from having any place in the Craven County school system. Just so happens, I have used my personal testimony in speaking to churches and other groups in the area, and I'm going to share a piece of it with you all tonight. Growing up, I was the fat kid, and I don't just mean hefty, I mean huge. I was the second-largest student in my kindergarten through fifth-grade school that I attended. Sure, I was made fun of, but nothing like when I was in middle school. I had kids throw things at me at the bus stop, nobody would sit with me, and my nickname was Petunia Pig. Kids can be so cruel. I watched as other kids were made fun of for wearing glasses, being slow, short, tall, or too skinny. We different kids were friends because we were outcasts. During my middle school years, I ended up losing my excess weight, which allowed my first two years in high school to be fairly normal. But I moved to New Bern at 16, went to a local hairstylist to use the wrong color on my hair. It ended up black as the ace of spades with a lovely green tint that shined in the sun. So my first day of school in a new state with new kids, and I was being called the Martian. I was made fun of for my accent, for being from another state, and now my horrific hair. I had very few friends for those two years in high school. I can still hear the comments from the back of my algebra class. Fast forward to my son being in middle school here. He was a small thing, super skinny, and not very tall. There was a game that was played that targeted boys like him. It was called the hitting game. Happens when one boy punches another boy in the groin to see if they can remain standing. My son was hit not once, but twice. I will tell you, he was not able to stand. In fact, the next day, he was in emergency surgery, and I will never forget the horror of what we went through. I tell you all of this so you will understand. Kids pick on others already because of their differences. They have always, and they always will. We should be teaching our likeness, not our differences. We can all clearly see physical differences in one another, but that is not what makes us who we are. As I look back now, I can clearly see where my personal experiences made me strong for the trials that lay ahead in my life. It also gave me an incredible love for those who are different because I've been there. We have no business teaching CRT in our schools. We should only teach each child to his or her own full potential, that their physical appearance does not matter, and it never did. We are all made in God's image, which is why we are told repeatedly to love our neighbors as ourselves. That is why we should be taught, because all things are possible with God, man's theory will never set precedence over his word. Thank you.
Oliver Moore.
Check. He left.
Danielle Kowalski.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Danielle Kowalski. I live at 117 Wildflower Way, Pollocksville, but that is in Craven County. It's on the Jones County-Craven line. I am against the resolution. I resent the commissioner's decision to pass a resolution opposing modern teachings such as Critical Race Theory Action Civic 69 Project because of the noise of the hitting of the bars created by a sector of Craven County residents. This resolution appears to have been drafted and prepared for a vote without the dissenting side to have received a pre-announced opportunity to create their own petition or email correspondence. Or maybe it was. I would not know, as there appear to be no published minutes on the website, correct me if I'm wrong, and I did not receive a copy upfront to confirm this fact. At the risk of violating the commissioner's own code of ethics, I will simply state that these actions are non-transparent at best and create further distrust at worst. Why are we here? Does the board have control over what its county schools teach? It was my impression that the State Board of Education controls... is the mic still on?
Yep.
Okay. The curriculum for its public schools, not the Craven County Board of Commissioners. To even draft such a resolution is moot and outside of your purview. If the State Board of Education approved certain documents for teachers to use as references, what right do the commissioners have to use their governmental position to take an official stance? Your resolution uses the term indoctrinate several times. If you want to be technical, indoctrination can be any form of teaching, be it religious form of teaching, or simply that saying "please" makes you polite and not doing so makes you rude. We all start out knowing nothing, and yet somehow, by the time we are 18 years old, we know that everything which we know is the gospel truth, most of that which was taught to us by our parents. About that, I am a moderate voter whom as a teenager was a member of Teenage Republicans, a Catholic, and you couldn't tell me that race was an issue. I had black friends, like black athletes and musicians. I was indoctrinated. I say this because I was terrified to let my parents know that I was dating a mixed-race boy. Three-fourths of my bloodline from the last four generations were not here at the end of the Civil War or the end of slavery, yet somehow, they learned to be American, you use racist language, and maybe even actions. I'm not ashamed of that. I know that's not who I am at my core. What I'm ashamed of is that residents of this city, of this county, want to act like racism is a non-issue, just when I know that decisions, word, actions have occurred in this county by people who are in power, some in this very room.
Thank you.
Praise the Lord, everybody, county commissioners. My name is Gethin Sampson. I reside at 1038... I'm so tall. Okay. I reside at 1038 Sampson Street in New Bern. James, all my dear friends, and one thing I like about it, we always have sometimes reasons to... to sometimes, we might not like what each other say sometimes, but we defend our lives, our right to say it. And the reason that I am against the resolution is because I know, since 82 years, I knew the truth about a lot of things, but that's one thing we need to know. Everything is not negative. Some things are positive. I've done a lot of positive things for my family and my teachers. And let me tell you, one time, I went, my daughter and I went to a school, a prominent school, to a program, and they had the... to me, it was the Negro National Anthem, but now they call it "If You're Voice and Sing." And nobody but my daughter and I stood up. You know what? We need to learn these things, because if we learn what we need to know on the positive side and not the negative side, I think everything will be all right, because God made us as one. He created us male and female, created him and them. And we need to learn that, we need to get along with each other, and I know for a fact that we really, really, really need to know what's happening in our lives, and it's up to us to take it the right way or the wrong way, but we hope and pray God that you take it the right way, because we need to know our history. Without our history, we are forgotten. I thank you very much.
Peggy Broadway.
Thank you. I'm Peggy Broadway. I live at 214 Change Street in New Bern. Our current educational system has abandoned its duty to teach students skills to survive in our current society. They have assumed the rights of parents to teach values to their children. As a society, we have confused the concepts of equality and equity. Equality is an opportunity that's given to every citizen through our Constitution. Equity is the outcome that's determined by an individual's effort and drive. There is no guarantee of equity outcome. How does we call... How does recalling lessons learned in the past, whether it be racism, burning of women as riches, or labeling young single women who happen to be pregnant? How does that benefit our young children in elementary school? My concern is that children who deal with current duties, whether learning to get along in society and get along with one another, learning to read, write, and do arithmetic, and allow this history to come along at a much later time in their development when they can understand it, and by all means, allow some questions. Understanding is that so many times, children in school are not allowed to raise questions so they're not given answers. So my concern is that we do this at an age level at which it is beneficial and not harmful. Thank you.
Brenda George.
My name is Brenda George, and I reside at 1822 Beaufort Street. The unadulterated history of America should not be forgotten, because knowing the full history informs the present. I recently learned the truth of that statement when I looked for information on Patriots of North Carolina during a legitimate study on the American Revolution. The first thing I encountered was an article on the white patriots of North Carolina, a 1950s-era group of leaders pledged to maintain, quote, "the purity and culture of the white race and of Anglo-Saxon institutions." But in addition, they vowed to preserve state rights and promote friendly racial relations. Capitalizing on Cold War fears, the patriots also charged their proponents of desegregation were communists. Same tactic, different decade. Demagoguery and peddling fear under the guise of patriotism is nothing new. This resolution, and to an even greater degree, the highly politicized 1776 Commission that it references, do nothing but propagate inflammatory political rhetoric that itself seeks to divide. This resolution is a manifesto that amounts to a modern-day book burning. The desire to control the narrative of our nation is clear in the 1776 Commission's characterization of American universities as hotbeds of anti-Americanism, libel, and censorship that combined to generate in students and in the broader culture, at the very least disdain and worse outright hatred for this country. And in a section about school curriculum, the 1776 Commission goes on to say that we should avoid one-sided partisan opinions, active propaganda, or factional ideologies that demean Americans' heritage. This resolution meets that Commission's own criteria for rejection. It is one-sided and partisan, promotes activist propaganda and factual ideologies that attempt to erase the legacy of discrimination and lived experiences of blacks and brown people throughout this country's history. Supporters of this resolution have quoted Dr. Martin Luther King's desire that individuals should be judged by the content of their character, not by the color of their skin, ignoring the context of the quote and the true meaning behind it. I just wonder why it's taken fifty-plus years for this idea to take hold. From a technical perspective, the resolution is poorly written, vague, contains undefined terms, gross exaggerations, and probable misrepresentations. It's irrelevant, unnecessary, and its only purpose is political posturing. I ask you, don't sign it. It speaks for itself. This is revisionist history, race-baiting garbage, and I know it when I see it. Thank you.
Burt A. George. That was my wife talking, and I second her. You know, my family has fought for this country for 250 years. We were with the Colonial Militia in 1756, the French and Indian War. My family has fought in every war that this country has had. The reason that we are able to be here tonight is, as we've said earlier, because of military people like myself, Mr. Williams, and others who fought for the right to speak tonight. But more than 200 years, even though my family fought for that right, we could not speak. Is that why we're so afraid of CRT? We need to teach the real history. It's important that our black kids and our white kids know where they come from and where we're going, and the fact that, yes, we are a much better America than what we were. So I strongly oppose this resolution, and I want to also let my wife, why are we here? Thank you.
Catherine Statch.
It's a challenge being short. I've got it. I'm not that short. I've got cheaters on. Good evening. I appreciate you giving me the time, and I thank you for being here and listening to all of us, both sides. It's important. I just wanted to say, I wasn't planning on speaking this evening. I have spoken in front of the school board. I will speak with them again. I do think our history is extremely important, the good, the bad, and the ugly quoting from those that spoke earlier, as well as the movie. There are a lot of things that happened in our past, in our country's past, some things that were not so good in our personal past. None of us are perfect. There is only one, there is only one, who was, and we can strive to do our best, but no matter what, if it's not for the grace of God, we would not be here. I just wanted to say, Critical Race Theory has prompted an outcry in the state of North Carolina, and I do agree with the objectives of the fairness and accountability in the classroom for teachers and students task force. But CRT, Critical Race Theory, is poisonous for liberty, our common humanity, and sense of community. It condemns the virtues of civil society, politeness, manners, hard work, self-reliance, and family cohesion. I'm only second-generation American on my dad's side. He was born here, came from Poland at the turn of the century. He was raised in a coal-mining town in West Virginia. He dropped out of school in the eighth grade to work in the mines and shovel coal for 25 cents an hour... I'm sorry, a ton, to help provide for his family. He never returned to school. But he fought in World War II. He was a veteran, and there were many other veterans on my mother's side, going back to the Revolutionary War. Some of them I'm very proud of, some of them I'm not so proud of. There again, we are all imperfect. But my father fought for our country. I can't believe how upset he would be to see what's going on now. He wasn't raised to see black or white. I wasn't raised. I had some terrible things happen to me. I could be extremely prejudiced, but I have to look through the lens of Christ who saved me. I was abducted and assaulted at gunpoint in my twenties by someone who was not my skin color. That could have made me so angry and bitter for the rest of my life, but I'm not, because they weren't perfect either. How big is our sin? Please, pass this. I support it. We need it. Thank you.
Ms. Statch, if you will, please give your address.
211 Easterly Drive, my apologies.
No problem.
211 Easterly Drive, New Bern.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Randall Seiler.
Randall Seiler, 3103 Side Saddle Lane, Trent Woods. I'm a current educator with the Craven County School System. Appreciate those who are speaking before, and everyone, it's gotten up again. The forum is the idea that we are to share ideas. First and foremost, I don't think the idea is being afraid to teach history. It's a matter of what are we doing when we try to teach that history? We need to, as many have stated, avoid political objectives and just teach history. I'm going to share a couple of comments from a writer that put together a pretty decent American history book entitled "The Land of Hope." Said, "A great nation needs and deserves a great and coherent narrative as an expression of its own self-understanding, and it needs to be able to convey that narrative to its home effectively. It perhaps goes without saying that such a narrative cannot be a fairy tale or a whitewash of the past. It will not be convincing if it is not truthful. But there is no necessary contradiction between an honest account of the American past and an inspiring one." He further states in the introduction that "one of the worst sins of the present," not ours, not just ours, but any present, "is its tendency to condescend toward the past, which is much easier to do when one doesn't trouble themselves to know the full context of that past, or try to do so without grasping the nature of its challenges as they presented themselves at that time." We acknowledge that we are all flawed individuals, but if we overly focus on the flaws, we fail to see the accomplishments and the good, and to identify, saying we identify a flaw that distorts the whole, that's an inappropriate approach as well. Unfortunately, CRT emphasizes a focus on skin color and the things that tend to divide us, as opposed to those things that unify us. I'm not opposed to teaching the whole history. As a lady before stood and talked about her practice in teaching her classes, you can talk to my students. I've taught social studies here in Craven County for, this will be my fifteenth year. I encourage questions. We talk about slavery. We talk about all of the things that go into making us who we are. I'm not afraid of any of those topics, but I believe they need to be dealt with with honesty and credibility. Many people have quoted this concept, "The truth will make you free." Sure, it'll make you free if you actually abide in the truth. Booker T. Washington made this observation, "A lie doesn't become true, and wrong doesn't become right, and evil doesn't become good just because it's accepted by a majority."
Guy Gregg.
Mister Chairman, County Commissioners, good evening. My name is Guy Gregg, 1104 Kia Court. I'm a new resident for North Carolina, however, I am not anew to government, or politics, or education. I had the privilege of serving fourteen years as a member of the New Jersey General Assembly, and more privileged to be a United States Marine Corps officer. First, thank you for putting this important issue on the agenda for the discussion tonight. Using our public schools at any level to promote racial division and supporting the founding principle that one race is the oppressor and the others are hopelessly oppressed is a direct contradiction with the principles our nation was founded on. The notion that anyone should be ashamed or denounce their race, sex, nationality, or religion is patently absurd and has no place in America today. This issue has lit a fire in the majority of parents of all races and political ideologies in this nation. The pandemic, with all of its harm, also allowed parents to see, while confined in their homes, what has been occurring in their classrooms while they were working to provide for their families. They were not always pleased with what they saw. They are now organizing and speaking out, and the system will never be the same again. For the pollsters in this room, this is a sixty-forty issue nationally. Creating independent school boards was designed to keep politics out of the management of our public schools. Unfortunately, many of our nation's school boards have lost that prime directive and have used their power to move their political agenda, rewrite, and adjust history under the guise of diversity. As a reform politician, I know, it's an oxymoron, I can understand that some might say, "Commissioners, stay in your lane. Education curriculum is not in your domain." I've heard it and seen it in my world. I say, many years ago, a mentor of mine left me with the words that have never left me when I ran the first time. Said, "Guy, politics is about taking sides. Commissioners, you all left the quiet stadium stands, went into the arena, and ran for office to represent us." I thank you personally for that effort. Parents want a quality education, not a theoretical indoctrination for their children. Support this common sense resolution and tell the parents that the schools are still theirs.
Rick Hopkins.
Good evening, Commissioners, and thank you for allowing this public forum. My name is Rick Hopkins, 3827 Canterbury Road, Trent Woods. I am here in support of the resolution, and I want to read from a commentary by Steve Klinsky, and the title of it is "The Civil Rights Legend Who Opposed Critical Race Theory." Critical Race Theory, or CRT, is the news these days, but many people still may not know what it really means. They think CRT is part of the Reverend Martin Luther King's civil rights efforts. In truth, it is directly opposed to the central concept and vision he most stood for. One of the last and greatest civil rights leaders of our time and one of King's closest friends and advisors did understand CRT and explicitly rejected it. Dr. Wyatt T. Walker was a legend in the American Civil Rights Movement. Executive Director of the Southern Christian Leadership Conference in the critical years of 1960 to 1964, he was co-founder of COR, the Congress of Racial Equality. Chief of Staff to King and King's Field General in the organized resistance against notorious Birmingham Safety Commissioner Bull Connor. Walker compiled and named King's "The Letter" from Birmingham Jail. He was with King toward the March on Washington that produced the "I Have a Dream" speech and in Oslo for the Nobel Peace Prize. Even as he aged, Dr. Walker never backed down from the passionate pursuit of civil rights for all. Dr. Walker was for fundamental respect of all people, without regard to their ethnic group, or religion, or the color of their skin. Dr. Walker's civil rights views tie back to religious values, to the humanism, to rationalism, to the Enlightenment. The roots of CRT are planted in entirely different intellectual soil. It begins with blocks, with each person assigned to an identity or economic block, as in Marxism. Human-to-human interactions are replaced with block-to-block interactions. As Dr. Walker tried to make clear, thinking in terms of blocks of people rather than of people as individuals leads to a whole set of insidious results. How can two people bind together in friendship if they are members of power blocks that are presumed to be inherently opposed? How can a person prove his innocence if he is branded as inevitably a part of a guilty group? Why should an individual strive to succeed by individual merit if group dynamics are presumed to be overwhelming and inescapable? How can we ever find peace among the races and religions if we won't look to each other person by person based on actual facts, natural intentions? Please, thank you and vote for this resolution.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, a couple pieces here to finish up. We had three people remove their names. Nancy Bradley was against, Cynthia Baron was against, and Michael Moore was for the resolution, for the record. They had to leave. If there's, I don't think there's two Guy Greggs, but his name was on here twice. Mr. Gregg, is there another Mr. Guy Gregg here?
I guess he can.
And, Mr. Chairman, there was a gentleman that approached me during the comments. He did not make it here prior to the meeting. Is the board willing to entertain his comments?
Yes, the board in agreement. Here, no objection, yes.
He's a gentleman in the half there.
All right, please come forward, sir. You will please state your name for the record and your address. Thank you.
Yes, sir, I'm William Cody Brinkley. I'm from 5520 Gondal deer Drive, just outside New Bern. I'm for the resolution. I may not be able to discuss in great grandeur or fancy words, but I can say this as an experienced student. We don't want this discrimination in our schools. We want to be unified as a people, not white, not brown, not gray, not purple. This system with CRT and its roots from race theory in general is just disgusting to me. And in fact, it churns my stomach in some ways just to think about how hard people push it. I do feel that history is important. Hell, I studied it for half of my college career. Good, bad, ugly, once again for the third time tonight. It is important and vital that we learn from it, but not that we muck our noses in it over and over again, saying that we should be ashamed. Sure, we need to learn from it, but that wasn't us. We need to move forward as a people, realize the mistakes of the past, but continue to learn that we are better than that and that we are as one people pushing towards the same goal as Americans, to be better and help the world. God bless America, and I hope we can get our school system issue. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if you could state his name and address, I didn't get it.
William Cody Brinkley, 5520 Gondal deer Drive. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, Mr. County Manager, is that all the citizens that have signed?
Sorry, that is everyone that signed up.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate everyone's comments. Item two on the agenda tonight is the consent agenda. You have there before you the minutes of the July 19th, 2021 regular session. You have tax releases and refunds. You have a sheriff budget amendment for the APS phone. Under CART, you have a storage unit rental budget amendment. And you also have the J.T. Barber High School Class of 1970/50 reunion proclamation. Commissioners, are there any items you desire to pull from the consent agenda?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented. Any discussion on the motion? Here, none. Mr. Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner McCabe.
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Liner.
Yes.
Commissioner Mark.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker.
Yes.
Chairman Jones.
Yes, thank you. Next item is the discussion on the proposed Critical Race Theory Resolution. Commissioners, what is your desire to eat this evening?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Liner.
Uh, not knowing what this board is going to do or discussion, but we've heard a lot of information tonight. Most, it's all, it's true, you know? It's both sides. There's good information out there. The biggest thing I got of that, and I think people realize it out there and we realize it, we have no authority. I mean, we're gonna vote on this, I would assume, and I'm not sure, on it, but I haven't heard anything tonight. I may have missed one pieces of, of what the public is actually looking for from us if this goes through, if this passes, is out there because everyone has stated, we have no authority. We can't do anything about it if it, if, if it's only for the county, it's only for the community. Sure, we're making a voice and we're saying we're against it, and I think we are. I mean, I've done more research than I desire to do on it and everything else and understand some of it, but this is, this is a state issue come down from, from the teacher up there or the legislators in Raleigh who, who is going to send this down and move forward, even if it comes down here and they're gonna do it, we have no say about it. We can't stop it. So I'd like to put a motion on the table that we change this resolution to go forward to read Resolution in Support of H. House Bill 324, which opposes divisive theories such as CRT, AC, and 1619. And also in the last, further be it resolved, that the Craven County Board of Commissioners does hereby support efforts, particularly House Bill 324, by the North Carolina General Assembly, to prohibit all, and I'm not sure about the word "all," prohibit divisive theories such as critical race, action civics, and 1619 project in all public school settings in North Carolina, including Craven County. But that's mine. That's whatever the board decides they want to do to go forward. This is an issue, it's, it's hard for me to try to run around because whichever way it goes, we can't do anything about it if they decide they want to do it. Here's my thoughts on it.
All right, Commissioner Liner, if you will, please read, and you, let me just make sure, you're making a motion?
Yes, sir.
All right, please read that motion once again of the changes that you're desiring.
In the title, change it from Resolution in Support of House Bill 324, which opposes divisive theories such as CRT, AC, and 1619. And at the last, further be resolved, that the Craven County Board of Commissioners does hereby support efforts, particularly House Bill 324, by the North Carolina General Assembly, to prohibit all divisive, to prohibit divisive theories such as critical race theory, action civics, and 1619 projects in all public school settings in North Carolina, including Craven County.
Including Craven County. All right, Commissioners, you've heard the motion. Do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman.
I have a second. All right, discussion on the motion.
I have a.
Well, Commissioner Mark asked to go first.
Mr. Chairman.
I agree with Commissioner Liner.
Hold it just a second.
I just want to make sure for the record there was a second.
There was a second. It was by Commissioner Mitchell. A motion by Commissioner Liner. All right, Commissioner Mark.
I agree with Commissioner Liner as far as how far this goes back and where each party lies. However, I believe that we should support the House of Representatives who has passed this bill and send it on that way.
All right, is that your comment?
That's my comment.
Okay, Commissioner McCabe, I think you were next.
Yes, I have a few things to say here.
If you will, please turn the mic to you so that.
Yeah, there is no reason why this board of commissioners have any sense of this resolution. We all know what this resolution stands for. The decision should be up to the Board of Education, not this board. I do believe that all people in our school system need to know the history of this country because I have been there. I am not in favor of this resolution at this time.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Smith, I think you were next, and then we'll go to Commissioner Mitchell.
I'm not supportive of this resolution in any form or fashion because to speak directly, all the negative talk in this resolution is addressing the issues of black people. And of course, I, I need to, to address that, but I want to say just a word or two that I have here and I'd like to share with this board. First of all, I'd like to share here a letter that I received today, not all of it, but just in part. This is from a husband and wife. We are very much against the proposal, proposed resolution that bans CRT in Craven County. We realize that it's merely a simple vote because the Craven County Commissioners actually have no input in Craven County school curriculum. However, this simple vote gives a very bad and sad impression of our sweet community. It says that we, or history counselors, close-minded, afraid to study, study the past in its entirety, not just Gone with the Wind romance stories. Please consider carefully what sort of image your vote will put to the country, not just the Craven County, ladies and gentlemen, to the country, if for no other reason than the economic future. You should vote against this resolution after the infamous bathroom bill, the NBA moved their All-Star game to another state. It's Springsteen and it's Mark Perelman refused to play in North Carolina. PayPal, the Bank of America, and Apple all boycotted North Carolina until this bill was changed. What corporate CEO would relocate here a branch in Craven County, understanding the resolution that we want to pass? What social concerns, what social organization would want to hold a convention in New Bern? Who would want to travel here? Who would want to invest in this community? Say no, and I am saying no. Tonight, when we had the Pledge of Allegiance, 99.9% of you stood, and I was slow because I was watching you to see that you did, you stood and you placed your hand over your heart and you pledged allegiance to the United States of America, pledged to this flag. This is a commitment. The last sentence in the Pledge of Allegiance says, "With liberty and justice for all." We may have to change our way of doing things, but we cannot and we must not exclude people, exclude history, and that is what we are trying to do here. Ladies and gentlemen, if the words of the Pledge of Allegiance rings true in your heart, you will not vote yes for this. I ask you, does it ring hollow to you? If it does, then I ask you another question. If this is true and this bill of resolution is right, where is my justice? Where is my liberty? Where is the liberty for people that are different, who don't share the same sort? We all need to have a voice at the table. We all need to have a voice, not one person or two people or people that think like you or look like you. We all need to have a voice at the table. Ladies and gentlemen, we have a right to our liberty. We are entitled to our liberty. The freedom, political freedom, without restrictions imposed by authority. This is a board of authority without the, that's what our Constitution tells us. Let us look then at the Declaration of Independence. We start all about our, our documents in here. The Found and Fathers define America very clearly with his powerful, with his powerful words that cannot be misunderstood or changed. The Declaration of Independence says, "We hold these truths to be self-evident," and I'm not reading the whole thing, "that the Creator, we are endowed by the Creator with certain inalienable rights, and among them is what? Life and liberty, the right to be, the right to be a part of, the right not to be cast aside. This is our right." Look at the Constitution. The Constitution tells us, "We, the people of the United States, in order to form a more perfect union, establish justice, ensure domestic." Can't say it. But one thing it says here is what? It gives the blessing of liberty. I ask you again, where is the liberty that you shut off when you say we can't have discussion? When you tell me that discussion brings hate? You know what brings hate? People that stand aside and talk about other people and talk about hate and injustice and twist truth. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, and fellow citizens, this resolution may be called, it may be called nonpartisan, it may be called nondiscriminatively, nondiscriminatorily, but it is riddled with divisiveness, fiction, hatred, oppression, injustice, unfairness. And ladies and gentlemen, it does not serve the best interest of Craven County. This is not what we need to do as a board. This is not what we need to do as a people. I have lived in Craven County all of my life, and I love the people in Craven County. I love Craven County. We have lived in Craven County with different people, different races. We have adjusted to personalities, races, religions, and a myriad of other things. Why now would we be so selfish that we determine what teachers can teach and what students can learn? What makes us think that we know so much more? Your personal beliefs is for your personal life and your homes. You cannot impose on me. You cannot impose on me what you have done for 200 years. I have the right to speak, as does the Spanish, as does the Native Americans. We need all, all races, all the minorities need to come to the table. All minorities need to be included. We have talked about the perfect history and we, and we have, when I look in my history book, I'm not a historian. I see the history that someone said earlier about this, I may be not using the right term, but the perfect history. And that's good, but it's time for us to look at the true history with all the warts, all the problems. We need to look at America as really like. People that know me know that I'm not perfect, but they love me anyway. The people that I know, I know that they are not perfect, but I love them anyway. So we have to not shut things up. We have to learn to be more acceptance, and we have to learn not to gather together because this is my buddy, this is my friend, I go to the same church, I am of the same party. We have to stand for God and country as an individual, loving one another, respecting one another, holding one another up, as many have done for me, white, black, Indian. I have, the bones of my ancestors scatter the ocean, the Atlantic Ocean, from the Ivory Coast to the Americas. I have no hate in me. I have no resentment because I've learned to love. I've learned to accept the people that are the hinder here, but I reject an issue that I, that you may think that you will continually and continue to keep me from reaching my full You don't have that right. We don't have that right. So board, I know I'm, I'm talking much. I'm feeling deep, and I appeal to you. I appeal to your humanity, and I ask you to do what we are supposed to do, and that is to govern, not to get into issues for some other reason. Well-intended things come to us, I've worked in the public for many years, things come to you and it sounds unintended. Part of it is, but if it's not in your pure view of responsibility, it's best that you leave it to those that it is.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Smith. Commissioner Mitchell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Is my microphone on? Can people hear me?
Yes.
Good. Thank you. First of all, I'd like to thank the citizens who came here today. I appreciate your investment and involvement in the affairs of this community and of this state. It's, that's what makes local government work, that's what makes this country work. Thank you. Once again, this is one of those issues where there is truth in what everyone had to say. Some truth in everybody's words. That makes it the most difficult issue of all to address when you have all sorts of truths, they may be in conflict, they may be different, but they are all correct. I am encouraged that I've heard everybody say, "We need to teach history, the good, the bad, and the ugly." That's a giant step forward, folks, with it. That's encouraging that we as Americans can say that. One of the advantages, advantages of having lived in 13 states and a number of overseas countries is, first of all, I've had the experience of being a minority in another country, of being the minority of white skin, where I was disliked with white skin, being the minority, minority Christian in a Muslim country or Buddhist country. It wasn't very comfortable. So I'm not trying to say that I know what it's like to be a minority in this country because I don't, but I'm saying I found it very uncomfortable when I was, was in other countries. And there is a lesson to be learned in that in terms of how hard we work on inclusion and inclusion in our melting pot of a country. But having lived in 13 states, I'm also not going to say that we don't have an issue with racism in this country, country, in this state, in this area. I've lived in places that were better, I've lived in places that, that were worse. I will call it the innate simpleness of man. Judging other people, they look like, like is something that we must all fight against all of our lives, in all societies, on all continents. We're not going to fix that unless we continue to work on it day in and day out. My problem with CRT is, is this history or is it an interpretation of history? I'm all for teaching facts. How we interpret the facts is a different issue. And theory has a tendency to become reality. Theory has a tendency to become, to be viewed as fact. Does anybody remember chronology? That's the science of judging character by the bumps on people's heads. It's a theory, it was accepted as fact, it was taught, it was believed, it was acted on. Anti-Semitism is another theory. African-Americans are less, are less than was another theory. Women are less capable was another theory. So my concern with CRT is that it, we are confusing theory and fact. My second concern frankly is that it in itself is not inclusive. There's Latino CRT, there's Asian CRT, there's disabled CRT. I'm going to guess that there is transgender, bisexual, gay CRT. If we're going to teach this, it needs to be inclusive, and it's not yet, and it needs to be taught as fact. I don't think we have the right to give direction to our local Board of Education. That's who we elected to do it. On the other hand, I think the taxpayers have a vote because taxes pay for the public schools. With it, I support the resolution as amended with it. I would not have supported it otherwise for that reason. So I appreciate everybody's investment. I hope the lesson that we take from this is that we need to work harder together as a community to make it better going forward. Looking at the past is great, but where we can really make the difference is how we build our futures.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Mitchell. Any additional comments from any of our board members? All right. Hear no additional comments. The only thing I would like to say before we go back and read, to make sure that we have the resolution amended correctly, is on behalf of this board, I just want to thank you all for all your emails, again, your calls, the petitions, your involvement in the political process. Today, we have been flooded with emails, and I will admit to you, I have spent my day, not on the farm, but I've spent it here in town. I have not had a chance though to go through those emails, and so many of you may not have got a response from some of us, and we will continue to read those, and we thank you for, again, for participating tonight, regardless of how you believe on this issue. I thank you for that. And I thank you to this board for your involvement in this process and for things you have done. Comment was made that we have not followed proper protocols, we may have done something that was improper, we may have done something against our code of ethics. I'm here to tell you, we have not. The resolution was submitted just like any other resolution we've ever had. It was put on the county website just like any other resolution has in the past. So anyone saying that this board of commissioners did anything illegal, that is not the truth. This board of commissioners did, just as we've always done in this process, and I commend the board and staff for what they've done. At this time, Mr. Clerk, if you will, read to us the amended resolution, the parts in it that have been amended. Do you have that before you? You do not have it? All right. I'm going to read what I have, and Commissioner Liner, you make sure that I am correct. The title, the heading of it, what we have there currently will go away, and the resolution will begin by saying, "Resolution in Support of House Bill 324, Which Opposes Divisive Theories Such As CRT, Action Civics, and the 1619 Project." I should have said, instead of CRT, it should be, go ahead and define it as critical race theory, to say it out. And then the last paragraph, what I have here is, "Further be it resolved that the Craven County Board of Commissioners does hereby support efforts, particularly House Bill 324, by the North Carolina General Assembly, to prohibit, to prohibit all divisive theories such as..."
Mr. Chairman, we've scratched all. I took all out.
Scratch all. Okay. Scratch all. Again, I will, I will go back, "by the North Carolina General Assembly, to prohibit divisive theories such as critical race theory, action civics, and the 1619 project in all public school settings in North Carolina, including Craven County." Is that correct, Commissioner Liner?
Yes, sir.
All right. We have a motion, we have a second. Any other debate? Any other comments? Hear none? Mr. Clerk, if you will, please call the board.
Commissioner McCain?
No.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
No.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes.
The motion passed. We're going to take a five-minute break, and we'll come back. That's brilliant, guys. Departmental Matters is next on the agenda, item number four. The first item we have tonight on Departmental Matters is Carts. Ms. Kelly Walker, and she will be here to discuss the bus stop sign holders for a budget amendment. Good evening, Ms. Walker.
Good evening. Good evening. We're requesting approval of a budget amendment shown in your attachment, number four, an amount of $8,700. This is to purchase sign holders indicating the fixed route stop locations. This urban expense will be reimbursed 100% using 5307 CARES Act funds. We have received many requests to put these signs up indicating the bus stop locations at the fixed routes. We're requesting to purchase 50 holders based on the number of stop locations on the proposed fixed route changes. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioners, you have any questions for Ms. Walker? Commissioner Liner?
I have a question.
Okay. Well, Commissioner Smith?
It doesn't have to do with that. Earlier, there was some discussion about one of the routes being taken away. I think it was the one out in the mall, wasn't it? Out by the Board of Education. Didn't someone say that that route was...
I think Commissioner Smith is referring to the reconfiguration.
The stop. I don't mean the route. I mean the stop.
Right. Where the stop at the three stops for Annie Kelly and one stop was, or a couple stops were needed.
Okay.
Were you, the specific site, Commissioner Smith?
No, I just wanted to know if you found a place so that you folk could have a place to get on.
She's talking about the academy and Hobby Lobby. Remember, we couldn't get in there, and we were going to move it to the school board?
Right. We're in discussion still with the Board of Education. It's not a done deal. There's some legal review going on over there that's taking place with their attorney. I plan on speaking with Dr. Miller, who's here tonight, next time we get together, about this stuff.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Liner.
Kelly, have we gotten, I guess, written authority or approval for the easement to go into these areas? Because a lot, some of these are on private properties, or...
I have verbal consent from all of the private properties, and then just the one that's still kind of, that County Manager was discussing, that's still in discussion on.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
Any other questions? Hear none? Do I have a motion?
Have a motion.
I have a motion and a second to approve the budget amendment in an amount of $8,700. Any additional discussion on the motion? Hear none? Mr. Clerk, if you will, please call the robe.
Commissioner McCain?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark? Vice Chair Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Walker. Appreciate you staying so late. Next, on the Health Department, we have with us Mr. Jennifer Blackman. Ann, is this your son?
Yes.
You want to introduce him?
Brian.
Okay. Hey, Brian. Welcome.
Hey, Brian.
Glad to have you this evening.
Brian. The first item for submission was the budget amendment in the amount of $42,487. This is money that we received for being a federally qualified health center that we use when we participated in a diabetes initiative program to lower A1Cs. So when they give you this money back, they expect you to use it for quality improvements within your agency. And that could be on your clinical things, and that can be on your billing side of the house. So what we'd like to do with this money is partner with fixed healthcare technology to perform what's called retrocade tracking. And we do this on a month-to-month basis. What this will do is it will allow, a lot of times we see patients who are self-pay, or they tell us they have Medicaid. We do not verify it on that date. We may sometimes go back and verify it. And what happens is, whether they, on the Medicaid end, if they forget something with their demographics or their pay, Medicaid might decline them until they go back and submit that stuff to Social Services. And what happens is, their Medicaid is then reinstated. Well, if we saw them on a day prior to, say, and their Medicaid was not active that day, we can then go back and bill. But that's a lot of work on our staff. So that's why we want to contract with this agency. This may be money that we're already losing, and this agency only collects 18% on paid claims. So if they do not find any Medicaid claims that we can rightfully go back and bill for, they do not get paid for the work. Okay? Medicaid is usually good for a year, so you have up to a year to back bill. So that's, again, why our staff just does not have the time to do that.
Okay. Are there any questions for Ms. Blackman? Hear none? Do I have a motion?
Some, a second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the budget amendment of $42,487. Any further discussion on the motion? Hear none? Mr. Clerk, if you will, please call the robe.
Commissioner McCain? Yes. Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark? Vice Chair Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes. Thank you. And then the next is the 340B Pharmacy and Adult Primary Care.
Yes. We received a two-year federally funded grant through the Recovery Act in the amount of $1,605,250. So with this money, it has to be used towards COVID-related activities, which could include testing or vaccinating, and it also can enhance your workforce, which is the piece that we're going to use to do I-340B pharmacy, if you guys approve it. And you can see here the lengthy, itemized, detailed amount. The majority of the funds will be staff salaries, we plan to hire a pharmacist, and then two full-time pharmacy techs. Also, any contract salary within that that could be used for our COVID vaccine clinics or COVID testing. And then it just goes through itemized, you know, health insurance, dental, life, prescription drugs. You know, when we start up this pharmacy, we're going to have some costs up front, so that's why that amount of $50,000. Janitorial medical supplies, again, contract services, contract employees.
Mr. Chairman, may I interject just for a second?
Yes.
So, once the board received the presentation, Jennifer and Scott and Nicole Sutton a couple months ago, staff began meeting and scoping out the project. There are numbers in here that may need to be adjusted, but the key is to get this thing up and rolling. We have the money now. One important part, Mr. Bennett, who's in the back, has to make some changes to the current IT configuration, which has about a 12-week lead time. The big piece of this project is now that we've set the location within the Health Department, there is a $400,000 capital improvement line that will then modify that space along with reworking the registration area to allow for the pharmacy to be placed. That number has not been bid. This is an estimate that's been given to us at where we are at this point in time. Mr. Hodges plans on going out and receiving pricing soon. So if there's anything that would need to be adjusted, my guess is it would be that number, which, of course, as Jennifer said, there's numbers in here that are fluid, the amount of testing they do, the amount of vaccinations that happen. So just to be clear, there's some newness to these numbers that needs to be modified.
Okay. Any questions?
Thank you, Jennifer. I have a question.
Commissioner Smith?
Is this improvement within the building?
Yes, ma'am. It takes an existing, what was previously a file storage area, along with the front side of registration, and it builds the pharmacy inside that space, relocates some of the file storage into the part of the building. And I think, Jennifer, improves the registration counter and allows this pharmacy to have access to the direct main hallway where the patients traverse to get out, to leave there.
All right. Anything else, Commissioner Smith?
Thank you.
Okay. Any other additional questions?
I make a motion that we approve this amendment.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Motion is for a budget amendment in the amount of $1 million.
Oh, yeah. I apologize. Part of this money, the remaining balance of $558,000, will be put on hold until fiscal year '23. I need to mention that.
Scott's presentation, you said this program would require no county money. So if I withhold it, the $523,000 covers mainly what will be the salary and incidental expenses in year two.
Yes.
It's front-heavy because you have the construction project, the equipment, and the initial supply of pharmacy consumables.
So, but the amount that we are approving is $1 million?
Your budget is $1 million in this year's budget, I guess.
Okay. All right. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the motion? Hear none? Mr. Clerk, if you will, please call the robe.
Commissioner McCain?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Blackman.
Thank you.
Appreciate y'all coming this evening. All right. Next is Finance, the Local Redistricting Services Budget Amendment. Craig Warren.
Good evening, Commissioners. I have one item on the agenda for you tonight, and that is a budget amendment for redistricting services. At your last board meeting, Commissioners authorized the county attorney and staff to retain the legal services of pointer and sprawl and demographer Blake Esselstein to assist the county with this redistricting process resulting from the 2020 census. Included in your agenda is a proposal to perform these services for a flat fee of $17,500. A budget amendment from fund balance in the amount of $20,000 noted as Attachment Six is requested to cover both the $17,500 fee for redistricting services and $2,500 additional for printing of additional maps.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Warren?
Make a motion.
All right. I have a motion and a second. Second. And I have a motion and a second for a budget amendment in the amount of $20,000 for legal services. Hear no more discussion on the motion. Mr. Clerk, if you will, please call the robe.
Commissioner McCain?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Vice Chair Booker? Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Warren. Appreciate it.
Commissioners, next, we have item seven, which is appointments. You have there appended appointments. You see those there. Do we have any nominations for any of those? Hear none? If you will, please go to current appointments. The first one we have is the Fire and Relief Fund Board of Trustees. This is one that's been on our list here for several months, and a name of Mr. Joshua Whitford has been sent over. I did have discussion with Commissioner Mark. He is in favor of this. He represents Township Two, and I'd asked that his name be placed in nomination. Are there any additional nominations? Hear none? We will set Mr. Whitford by acclamation. Next is the Adult Care Home Advisory Committee. Mrs. Cheryl Wyatt wishes to be reappointed. Ms. Wyatt is from District Two, which I represent. I would ask the board if they would to reappoint her. Are there any additional nominations?
What is it? What is the county advisory committee?
Adult Care Home Advisory Committee.
Oh, Adult Care. Okay. Thank you.
All right. Hear no more nominations. She is accepted by acclamation. Next would be the Community Child Protection Team, and you will see the next three. Ms. Debbie Hodges has retired from the Craven County School System. She was Director of Student Services. I did talk to the county manager about this. All three of these require this individual, whoever serves as Director of Student Services, to serve in this capacity. Do I have a nomination?
Mr. Chair, by the way, so our bylaws or whatever says they can, they're required to have?
Yeah. So each of these boards requires a representative from Craven County Board of Education involved with student affairs. So Ms. Hodges served on each of these boards, and she has now left the system, and her replacement is Mike Swain.
Okay. Make a motion.
All right. We have the motion. Any additional nominations? Hear none? Mr. Swain will be appointed to the Community Child Protection Team. Also, for Craven County's Clean Sweep, we had the same thing. Do I have a nomination?
Yes.
All right. Mr. Swain? All right. Do we have any additional nominations? Hear none? He is accepted by acclamation. And then also for JCPC Board?
I'll nominate Mr. Swain.
Okay. We have a nomination for Ms. Swain. Any additional nominations? Hear none? He is accepted by acclamation. That takes care of the current appointments. You have there the upcoming terms expiring in August and September. The Community Child Protection Team, Craven County Board of Adjustments, District Seven, Commissioner Booker, Craven County's Clean Commissioner Booker, Craven County's Clean Suite, District Seven, also the Trillium Health Services Board, and JCPC.
Mr. Chair.
All right. Yes, sir.
Could I ask staff to have Nan or someone reach out for Angela? She's the attorney that's representing. Yeah. See if she still wants to serve.
Yes, sir.
If not, I got a nomination in front of me.
All right. Any additional appointments tonight? Here none. Next is the County Attorney's Report. Mr. Eric Grady, good evening, sir.
Mr. Commissioners, Commissioners, good evening. I have one item for your consideration this evening. It involves county-owned real estate acquired through the tax foreclosure process. The property is located at 243B James Street in Vanceboro with a parcel ID number of 1-V-04-011-A. We have received a purchase price of $3,500. The board approved this at a prior meeting. The property has been through the upset bid process with no further bids, so our final bid is $3,500. We do own this property jointly with the county of Vanceboro, who has already approved this offer, so it's ready to go. Should the board authorize it this evening? It is my recommendation that the board adopt the necessary resolution to move this to closing.
All right. What's the desire of the board?
Second.
I have a motion and I have a second.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the resolution? All right. You heard the comments about the county attorney. You see the partial ID there before you. Here no more discussion. All in favor, signify. Say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passed.
That concludes my report.
Thank you. Appreciate it, Eric.
Mr. Sir.
All right. Next, we have petition of citizens for general topics. Do we have anybody?
Mr. Chairman, I was going to joke and said you have a physical, but there's no one here, so it won't work.
Okay. Thank you, sir. All right. Next would be County Manager's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Appreciate the opportunity. Two brief items tonight. I was proud to announce today that we're hosting the 97th Civil Affairs Battalion at Fort Brack for a training mission here in Craven County. Our initial kickoff meeting today went really well. Great, great teams here. They're learning about hurricane recovery. Part of their training mission is to be here, be on the ground, visit sites, look at real-life instances that have happened. Of course, we're working with Matthew and Florence, a few much recent events. Great, great group of folks here. If you see them around, they were walking around town today, checking it all out. And we'll receive a final brief on Friday from the team, which will help them prepare themselves for where they may be assigned to next. Also, as a follow-up, you did approve the budget amendment for redistricting just a few moments ago. I have worked with our legal team, our counsel here, and then the counsel that's been hired, Caroline Mackey. Caroline was very courteous and has offered to be here for each of the next day meeting that the board will have, to be able to stay after to complete the task that this board needs to do to be ready for November 18th and final approval. Those dates are August 16th, which is your next meeting, September 20th, October 18th, and November 15th. I believe, Mr. Hodges, all of those dates coincide with our day meeting.
Yes.
So I would just ask for your calendars to check now if there's any day that you cannot stay past our normal meeting time.
So, August 16th?
Yes, ma'am.
You want to read those one more time, please?
Yep. August 16th, September 20th, October 18th, and November 15th.
All right, Commissioners? Everybody good with that?
October 18th, I may or may not be here.
Okay. All right. Anybody else?
I don't have my calendar with me. I'm sorry.
Okay. Jack, we have to have this, so we would have to approve this by November 15th meeting, correct?
Correct. So the timeline would be, you want to have a public hearing at your very first November meeting, which would be November the first. Is that correct?
I believe so.
So your adoption would be November 15th.
And that gives us adequate time to get it, we have to go to Department of Justice. Where does it go?
I don't believe it requires pre-clearance anymore, Mr. Grady, but it does have to be approved by resolution. Ms. Mackey will walk you through all that. The 15th does give us time. If there's something that needs to be done, you can recess, and then you've got a couple days to work it out.
Okay.
We, and the symbology is, we still don't have census data. I believe Mr. Blake said August 16th would be when that data is released. So we still can't actually start work till the data is uploaded from the census. But by having the initial meeting, presentation from Blake, having Caroline come on the 16th, we're able to get down the line, so when the data hits, we're ready, ready to go.
And this may require also a special call to meet and...
It could, sir. It just really depends on how it goes and what this board's in agreement about.
Any questions for the county manager on this, or the county attorney? All right. Here none?
Mr. Chairman, board, that's my comments.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Jack, you want to remind everybody about Wednesday?
Oh, thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Liner. Wednesday, many of you received, all of you received an invitation to attend a ribbon-cutting for the Westin New Bern community. Commissioner Liner, the time has left me as I'm standing here. I believe it was at 10:00 AM. Is that correct?
10:00 to 12:00.
10:00 to 12:00. And that's onsite there. It's going to be a great event.
Wednesday.
I think most everyone here is RSVP, if I'm not mistaken, so...
This one's it?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. We'll go to Commissioners' Reports next. Commissioner Smith, we will begin with you this evening.
No, I've had a, I've said, oh, I need to say goodbye.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. Commissioner Liner.
Just a reminder, if you haven't reached out, the salute to vets is still a go in Havelock on next Tuesday. Don't know the status of what's left as far as tables or seats, but you can give the Tourism Events Center a call. Sir, that's it.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Commissioner McCabe.
Mr. Chair, I don't have anything.
All right. Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you. I, last week, I attended the Association of Defense Communities Reconnect Conference. This is the first time they have met since the COVID shutdown. It was a two-day conference. I also met with Representative Murphy, Senator Tellis's staff, and then ACT also met with Senator Burres and, I'm blanking out. Senator Butterfield, I'm sorry. With it as well. The focus of the conference was BRAC. It was either very overtly, BRAC is coming, or it was one step below, need to be concerned with BRAC. Some states are already forming BRAC commissions. The Military Affairs Commission will be recommending that to North Carolina. We're starting informally to work on it, and it will move into a more formal effort this fall. The two things that I thought were really important about it, one, climate change because of the issues impacting bases. Bases that are vulnerable are obviously being looked at very carefully to see what they can do for climate mitigation. The other issue that was focused on was diversity, equity, and inclusion, DEI, from emission readiness. If communities are not welcoming to people of color and soldiers are refusing to go, it is an issue that impacts mission readiness for the installations. And that's particularly important because our military forces are now 43% minority. So it's a big issue that's impacting readiness, and it's something that every community needs to look at. That's it.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate that. All right. Vice Chair Booker.
I have nothing.
All right. Commissioners, I do want to just share with you, you may have already heard, but it was just relayed to me a few minutes ago that Jones County Sheriff, Mr. Danny Heath, passed away this afternoon unexpectedly. Sheriff Heath was a good friend of Craven County's. He worked in conjunction very closely with Sheriff Hughes and Major McFadden's here, and all of the Craven County staff. A great loss, not only for Jones County, but also for Craven County. And I know I speak on behalf of this board to say that, you know, our prayers go out to his family, and we're greatly saddened for his loss. He has done a terrific job in that county and worked very hard, so... Commissioners, that's all I have. Again, I just want more time to thank you all. It's an honor to serve with each and every one of you. No, we do not always agree on everything, but at the end of the day, we're going to leave here friends, and I thank you for that. I thank you for your friendship. I thank you for being my colleagues. The Lord has given us all this opportunity to serve for season, and we none know what tomorrow holds. That's for sure, and the passing of Sheriff Heath. But we, for this season that we're here, we continue to ask God's guidance and direction. Also, want to thank staff for all we all have done in preparing tonight, for everybody in the back, for those that may not be in this room that have prepared. A lot of effort went into it to give the citizens of this county the opportunity to speak. Thank you all. Appreciate it. And to our Convention Center staff here, we thank you also. Anything else to bring before the Board of Commissioners tonight? Here none, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So move second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify. Say aye.
Aye.